December 12th, 2017, meeting, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. Present is Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer. Whoop, on the side. Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly, and Mr. Peterson. If I could have you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Seven years it's been over here.
(laughing). (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you very much.
(inaudible).
We'll start as usual with student reports. Why don't we start with Ward this time? And so, Mr. Orbin and Mr. Rivera, why don't you start?
Absolutely. Well, this week, December 12, 12, we, us at Ward, are waiting for the first snow day. But until then, we are looking forward to our Carolin concert, which is a community performance, next Sunday occurring, which is the only one that the public is able to attend. So, tickets go fast. So, it's a pretty good performance. I recommend checking it out. Usually sold out on Tuesday, I think. And recently, Ward hosted the district leadership team for walk-throughs on Thursday, December 7th, and 36 classrooms were visited. We are very proud to have them there. Is that what you'd like to take up?
All right. I'm gonna jump over to Kathleen. All right. We also have our winter sports are starting up. We have scrimmages going on, on all accounts. The ski team is actually going to the mountain before Christmas break, which is first time in a long time. We have our annual Fairfield U kind of holiday tournament for the basketball team. And then, we also just recently printed out a very large poster of our Pinkout picture, where, I'm not sure if you guys have seen it, but where a bunch of the Ward students were in the courtyard in the shape of a breast cancer ribbon, all wearing our pink shirts. So, we have a really big poster in the hallways, kind of showing what we did and getting students just engaged in recognizing the efforts that they made. And then, we also are planning on staying tonight because we recognize that Mr. Ebling and others have a presentation on the high school academic expectations. So, we think that applies to us. So, we'll be staying for that.
And because you're on this side of the table, this would be the one opportunity to heckle your headmasters.[197.62][197.62](laughing). Other comments from Ward?
We'll take advantage of that opportunity. Happy holidays, too.
Happy holidays. Ms. Baker and Ms. Sch -- not your name?
Schichter.
Schichter, yes.
Okay. So, last Monday, the Red Cross Club had their annual blood drive, and this year was extremely successful. Over 40 units of blood were donated, and they only had to defer four people, which was much better than in previous years. So, everyone thought it was overall a very great success. Additionally, like Ward, we have our candlelight concerts beginning next week on Wednesday and Thursday. There's two performances on Thursday and one Wednesday. It's an extremely popular concert, and from what I understand, tickets sold out extremely quickly as well. So, everyone's very excited about that. All the music students have begun recording all their pieces, and it's just a great time for everybody. And then additionally, the school has begun the NEASC survey for, to begin the self-evaluation of Ludlow. So, students, staff, and parents were all encouraged to fill out a survey that evaluates school academics, teachers, resources, and the overall school climate. So, also, this Friday is our pep rally as we start off winter sports. And last week, our AP Gov. and comparative government students were able to video chat with Tommy Viatour, who's the host of Pod Save the World, and the co-founder of Crooked Media. He was also the spokesman for President Obama's National Security Council and is an expert in foreign affairs. So, that was a really cool opportunity for those students. And last Tuesday, on December 5th, we had, we hosted a career day at Ludlow as part of our school's continuing efforts to prepare students for life after Ludlow. The goal of the event was to provide students with information about a variety of jobs, industries, career paths, and related education and training, and to learn more about occupations and the opportunity to reflect on their own career-related interests. And the feedback was very positive from students, faculty, speakers, and parents alike. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for our representatives from Ward and Ludlow? Ms. Maxon Cunnelly?
Not a question, just, well, actually, one. Ms. Schichter, are you a junior or senior?
I'm senior.
Okay. So, I just wanted to say to Ms. Baker, Schichter, and Mr. Orbin, good luck, because I know you must be waiting for some news that must be imminent, and just wishing you good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker is shy.
I got into the U yesterday. Congratulations. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members for our student representatives? If not, thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the meeting until we get to the issue that you're here for. On to public comment. If this is the time for any member of the community to come forward and talk on an agenda item only, recognizing that if there is an item up for vote, then of course you can talk at that time, but you can't talk both times. Anybody wishes to come forward and present to the Board of Education at this time?
I have to go. I have to do it tomorrow.
Okay. Seeing none.
See how good I am.
On to presentation of PTA delegates. Mrs. Gerber has normally been the one who has handled communications for us and is specifically communicating with the PTAs on our visits to PTA meetings as well as welcoming them here. So, I'll turn the meeting over to Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you. I'm actually not sure if there are many PTA representatives here. If anyone is a PTA rep, could you just put your hand up, just so I can see? Oh, good. Okay. Great. All right. Well, I'm here to introduce the Board of Ed reps to our different PTAs around town. It's often one of the harder positions to fill on a PTA board, and so I really appreciate the work that you've done and glad to see some people here. I know now with Fair TV, it's a lot easier for people to watch meetings from home, but I think you kind of capture a little bit more when you're here in person. So, glad you could make it. And if you could just come up and introduce yourself and say what school you are representing, that would be great. Thanks.
We're gonna wait here until everybody that raised their hand comes forward. So, sit down for a second. Introduce yourself, school that you're with, and...
Hi. Jill Vergara. I represent Sherman. Thank you.
Stay there for a moment while others come forward.
I'm Linda. Hi. I'm Linda Erickson, also representing Sherman on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Others coming forward?
I'm Rhea Metta, representing Dwight.
Dwight, welcome.
Kelly Jacobson, representing Mill Hill.
Mill Hill, welcome.
I'm Kelly McWinnie. I'm representing NSS.
I thought you were coming up at me.
Which, for those who don't know, that's short for North Strattfield.
Bonnie Rotelli, SEPTA.
Thank you very much for the work that you do year-round for the students at your individual schools and for the district in total. Thank you very much. On to new business, the approval of Holland Hill plans and specifications. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Holland Hill plans and specifications. Mr. Asa, can I assume that you'll make the motion?
I do. I make the motion.
Second, Mrs. Gerber. I'll ask the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Building Committee to come forward while I am updating the new board on this. Back in 2010, certain schools were put in order of when we could renovate them and put an addition on. Holland Hill was voted by a board then. It was re-voted in 2015, and then it was voted again to move the project forward and ask for a building committee. The educational specs were voted on and then voted on a second time. So, this project has come before us many times, but not in front of this board tonight. The state does require that just prior to submitting the plans and specifications, drawings, and whatnot, to the state for their review, that the Board of Education give a final sign-off for it. This won't be the last time Holland Hill comes before us, but this is a key moment for them. So, I'll, the materials were sent to you in advance. I don't think they have a specific presentation, but are here to respond to any questions that you may have.
First of all, for those that don't know me, I don't know how you can do that, but[672.12][672.12](laughing), I'm Tom Quinn, representing Holland Hill tonight. Past was Riverfield, okay? And this is Bill Mandeville, okay, who's our Vice Chair for Construction. And so, you'll see a lot of Bill during the next year and a half as he helps put together the school. So, just so you put the names of the faces.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, just especially for the new members, I mean, this really is a technicality in terms of, this isn't changing anything from the original ed specs that we approved or that the previous board approved. This is simply a box that needs to be checked off before the paperwork can go on to the state.
Correct. It's actually a signature line that is needed on this form that goes to the state. Correct.
Yeah.
I already signed it, by the way.
The, but I haven't. The Board of Education is responsible for advancing a project, number one, and number two, approving ed specs. And so, after that, it is the town's responsibility to build and finance the project. Our real responsibility is to ask the Chairman of the Building Committee, do your plans and specifications meet the ed specs that we approved?
Yes.
There may be other questions you want to ask, but that's the central one that is before us.
And from the town's perspective, it's gonna cost $18,540,000, of which $500,000 is reserved for unforeseen remediation.
And the commitment from the very beginning is that that money, if not needed for remediation, will not be spent on other things.
Will not be bonded.
Yeah. I don't see any other hands raised, so therefore, I'll go out to the public for any public comment on the Holland Hill project. Since this is a voting item, anybody from the public wish to come forward and make a comment to the board? Seeing none, back to the board. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the Holland Hill plans and specifications. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Unanimous. Mr. Quinn has a reputation that his meetings don't take very long, so he is totally impressed with how quickly we did this.
I am overwhelmed.[838.12][838.12](laughing). Thank you very much, everybody.
Our next item is health insurance projections. As you know, part of the budget process. We asked the board for comments on what they would like to see in the budget in October. We asked the Superintendent to tell us what the principal program initiatives are in November, and then we talk about the health and pension issues in December, and then, of course, January, we review the whole budget. So, Aon, our insurance consultants for the town, as well as the Board of Ed, is here tonight to go over the exhibit that was sent to you. Do you have any initial comments that you want to make, Dr. Jones, before they present? So, the floor is yours. You might introduce yourselves for the public.
Doreen Munsell, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. To my right is Carlton Lindgren from Aon and Joel Chamberlain. Just gonna give a little bit of history. We've been on the Connecticut Partnership 2.0 plan since July 2016. Last year, the same time, December, Aon was here to give us an analysis of what they thought claims might look like when we were just up five, we were on the plan for just five months. Now, it's 17 months later, and they've done a similar analysis. These are, this is just for illustrative purposes only. These aren't hard numbers, so I'll let them explain what they did, but...
Thanks, Doreen. Okay. So, Carlton Lindgren from Aon Hewitt. I see a lot of new faces, so please feel free to ask questions as we go along. But on the first page of the exhibit, the handout, we have basically tried to simulate what we thought the cost would be had you remained on your prior plan design, which was a self-insured plan through Cigna. Those are the numbers on the left-hand side of this chart, and on the right-hand side, the costs under the state, the state 2.0 plan. So, on the left-hand side, the right column that says projected 1718, we're coming up. I'm just gonna talk about the medical and RX, and we can discuss the dental if you'd like. But so, we took the old Cigna claims data back when we had Cigna claims data, projected it forward, and made some adjustments to that based on what we felt the claim experience had been over the past 12 months or so. Came up with a cost of $30,562. So, that's what we believe you would have spent in the 1718 year had you continued on with Cigna. Now, on the right-hand side, you'll see three columns. It says annualized 7-1-17 rates. The state partnership plan implemented some plan changes on 10-1 of 17. So, the three columns represent had the rates been the old plan, the old state partnership plan at 7-1 of 17, and then what they would have been for a full 12 months at the 10-1 rates, and then what actually happened because the public schools adopted those plans on 10-1 of 17. So, it was basically three months of the 7-1 rates and nine months of the 10-1 rates. So, those costs, if you look all the way on the right-hand side, of $25,475. And those are, those are absolute costs because we know what the rates are, and we know what your head counts are, so we just do simple math. The savings on just the medical portion is $5,087,000. Okay? Now, the dental plan was a little bit more costly. It would have been $1,383 under the Cigna plan, I'm sorry, that was actually Delta Dental at the time. So, it would have been $1,383 under the Delta Dental and $1,456061 under the state partnership plan. But in total, the state partnership plan is still saving over $5 million. Anybody have any questions?
Could you, for the benefit of the new members, talk about the trend analysis that sometimes you applied when you project forward? And is that trend analysis part of what you were commenting on the $30,562?
Right.
And what is the current trend that you're using?
Right. So, we'll use trend to project claims forward to come up with that $30,562. All the numbers to the right of that, like I said, are absolute numbers. They are produced by the state of Connecticut, and we just take those rates and multiply them by head counts to come up with the cost. But trend in kind of layman's terms is medical inflation for healthcare costs, if you will. So, to get this number, $30,562, we used 7% annually for medical claims and 11% annually for prescription claims. So, we took basically old claim experience and trended it forward, and then made an actuarial adjustment for what we thought was happening to the claim experience based on what we saw from the claims on the state side.
Other questions on this page? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly?
These are two questions that I believe I already know the answers to, but I would still rather ask them publicly, which is, one, the district did not have any option to do this October 1st changeover any earlier, correct?
They could not do it earlier. They could have done it later.
Right. So, they could have waited till the, what?
They could have waited till 7-1 of 18.
Right. So, the point being that this was done at the earliest possible opportunity. That was not a wasted moment.
Correct.
And then, the second question, again, is that the Delta, the dental cannot be separated out.
We couldn't buy Delta from a, dental from a different provider.
Well, technically, I think at the time, we could have waived our, yeah, I think at the time, right, we could have waived the dental coverage and gone elsewhere.
The HEP program, talk about the HEP program.
But, yeah, well, it gets a little complicated in that
Okay.
Some of the medical management processes that take place with respect to employee contributions and so forth, some of the dental is incorporated into that. So, it...
Is this code for that I'm not gonna understand the detailed explanation? Is that it?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
And quite frankly, the state makes it...
Difficult?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just as a follow-up to that, are there other municipalities that do split out dental and regular health?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I suspect that there are, but I don't know for a fact that there are.
If I could make a comment. There is a, I'll call it a wellness component to the program. The state teams the HEP program, H-E-P program, that has preventive care components to that, and if those preventive care components are not tracked and members given credit for having achieved those preventive care visits and so forth, there are premium penalties associated with that. And there are dental visit components to that program, which are, you know, easier to track through the state plans administrator of that preventive care program that makes it advantageous to be in their dental program as well as the medical program.
Quick follow-up on that?
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly?
Those impact on the premium, that's solely affecting the employee. That's not the district.
Correct.
Correct.
And, you know, one other thing, too, is the dental plan, the actual actuarial value of the dental plan is richer under the state plan. So, that's, you know, some of the reason why there's an increase is because the plan's actually richer and more costly.
Ms. Pitko? Okay.
Okay. So, the second page...
On the next page?
Yeah. The next page is, we outlined participation, in case this was of any interest, we outlined the participation in the state partnership plan 2.0, the year that the groups came in, the number of groups enrolled, whether they adopted those changes on 10-1 of 17 or not, and the number of people enrolled, subscribers enrolled during those years. So, there's 11,976 folks currently enrolled in the state partnership plan, and that's comprised of 66 groups, of which 29 implemented the 10-1 changes on 10-1.
No questions on that page to the next?
Yeah. The next page or two, I'm not sure how it shows on your document, but is a listing of the actual participants in the plan. So, the effective date, the employee count, and if they haven't already moved to those CIBAC changes, the 10-1 changes, when they expect to do it. So, this is more, it's detail of the prior page, quite frankly.
No questions on that, the last page?
And the last page are just the specific changes. We felt it was important to outline the specific changes that were made on 10-1 of 17.
These are changes made by the state, and we had about a one-week turnaround time to analyze it and then decide whether to move forward, and so the Superintendent and our Director of Finance did that work and talked to the unions at the time and made a fairly quick decision to take advantage of the lower rates as soon as they could.
Yeah. We felt, quite frankly, we felt that the rates, the reduction in rates was of more value than the reduction in the benefit. It's not, it's not technically a reduction in benefit, quite frankly, from an actuarial standpoint. It is, you now have to get care at a specific location versus they're not covering something or they're gonna cover it at a lower level, you know, for the most part.
Mr. Asa?
So, looking at this top line here for deductible.
Yeah.
Prior to 10-1, there was a deductible. Am I reading this right, that effective 10-1 for services in Connecticut, under the new plan, there is no deductible?
If you go to the designated United Healthcare Providers, correct?
Okay.
Right.
And also, no copay, it looks like?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That it? Okay. Other questions from the board? The district has saved money with this decision back in 2016. Employees saved money with this decision. So, it's been a good deal, I think, for us in terms of bending the cost curve of health insurance for this district.
Yeah. I mean, if you go back to page one, the reason we put that way-left-hand column in there is because the 1718 medical number would be $25,475. You spent $28,641 actual costs in 1516. So, your projected costs, assuming head counts stay the same, for 1718 is gonna be significantly lower than your 1516 cost.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much for coming out.
You're welcome.
Now, the agenda item that at least three people at this table have been waiting for, and that's the High School Academic Expectations Enclosure Number Two, and I'll ask the Superintendent to lead us through this.
Right. I will invite both headmasters to come forward and also our Chief Academic Officer.
Will this be overhead or just...
Mr. Cummings, are you actually using PowerPoint?
We're gonna need that, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll ask people here to kind of move to the front.
Wait for them to dim the lights. Sam and I made cookies this weekend, and I ate them. I ate them all. Like, I'm gonna keep holding them. Tonight, and I was like, oh, those are all a bit smug. (laughing). I know. It's dimming the lights at this time. Those are the old ones.
Try to get the lights. I look better in the dark. Yeah, okay.
My name is Mike Cummings. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. I'm joined by our high school headmasters. We're going to present tonight a comprehensive look at several issues that are going on at the high school level this year, including the academic expectations, touch on the NIASC accreditation process, and then conclude with explanation of the portrait of a graduate work with some of our administrators and teachers are currently involved in, which will ultimately have an impact on the work we're doing around the revisions in the graduation requirements as recently imposed by the state. So, I'll turn this over to, I believe, Mr. Has, uh, Mr. Ebling.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings, and thanks to the board for giving us an opportunity to speak with you this evening about some of the work we've been doing in our school. Our academic expectations are really designed so we can measure what we believe we want our graduates to be able to do when they leave high school and at a certain level. They reflect our 21st century skills, which are necessary to be successful for after high school and in the workplace. We're still, as we approach 2020 rather rapidly, we're still talking about 21st century skills, and many believe we should up that a little. We use the academic expectations with an intended focus to help guide our instruction in the classroom and to make for purposeful assessments to measure the skills that are outlined through our academic expectations. So that's really the purpose of them, for our teachers, to help them when lesson planning, when looking at unit planning, and then when they're developing their assessments, are they designing those around the skills that are outlined for us in the academic expectations. Also, our curriculum documents, which many of you have seen at this board table over the years, in all of our academic areas, help to teach those skills through the content to all of our students. So, again, we're trying to get all those arrows going in the same way, our instruction, our assessment, and certainly our curriculum. They do help to accomplish our NIASC accreditation. Every high school wants to be an accredited one. NIASC, as many of you know, is the oldest accrediting agency in the United States and is a often sought-after accreditation by many international schools as well. NIASC helps us through their standards and us achieving those standards, and we'll talk a bit more about that this evening, the process that both high schools are currently in, even though our timeframe is a little different. And through those standards, measuring and really designing a number of years ago what these academic expectations were and the revision process that we've been through, I'll speak to you a little bit about that as well. But it's important for us to maintain our accreditation, and it's instrumental in keeping us aligned with the standards of NIASC. Give you a little bit of the history, not too long, but some of the multiple versions going back to previous accreditation processes. One of the benefits of NIASC is a self-reflection piece that it asks every high school to do. And we've really been looking at that over these number of years. But when you look back at 1999, when we were just Fairfield High School, as a result of that accreditation, when the visiting committee came and then when they issued their report and they made their recommendations, a lot of it at that point was, you need to be determining for your school and for your staff, for your students, what it is that you feel is important. So that was kind of the first go-around of recommendations to start identifying what our academic expectations were, what our values and beliefs were for our students in our school. I put in 2004 there because every, those of you that are familiar with the process know that NIASC is really in a tenure cycle, but within that tenure cycle, there's many benchmarks to make. There's a two-year report that asks you to react and respond to all of the recommendations that they made. There's a five-year report that's progress, and then setting you up for the self-study, which really occurs about two years before their actual visit. So in 2004, we were really beginning to look at what are the academic expectations we want for our students, how we're going to measure those. The high schools at that point were just beginning to divide, but we came up with six recommendations, or six academic expectations that we wanted for our students, and we included those with our social and civic expectations as well. 2008, 2009, the two years that, 2008 for Fairfield-Ludlow High School and 2009 for Fairfield-Ward High School, when that visit came about, we developed, for example, at Ward, our acronym, also our academic expectations. But now we had to determine how we're going to really teach those and how we're going to measure those. So I wanted you to get a little bit of an understanding that these are not new to us, these academic expectations, they're things that we've been studying for a long time and working on. I found an archival poster in our school just this week that this was our six academic expectations from the 2009 visit. And you'll see many of the same words that are incorporated in these six academic expectations form the basis of what are now our currently, I think we're probably in our several revisions since then, but they're the same skills that are measured in these six transformed in a different way to make it easier. But many of the things that we considered important back in 2009, we still consider to be important. 2009, NIASC gave us feedback, and one of the things NIASC talked about then was, as the educational landscape was changing, we really needed to start incorporating more of those 21st century skills. So after the visit at both high schools, we did bring in an educational consultant to work with about 16 staff members and administrators from both high schools to revise our academic expectations and make them more 21st century, reflective of the skills that we needed for our students to have. And at that point, I think we came out with something like 16 academic expectations, 16 people on the committee, everybody wanted something, and we realized that this really was not going to work either. So we moved again to our current vision, which you're going to see in a few minutes in 2014, with both high schools represented in the faculty and the current revision in 2017. In 2014, one of the things NIASC was saying, now remember, we're five years from that visit in 2009, so in our update report, how are you going to determine the best ways to identify what, where students stand on those skills in the rubric, and how are you going to report out that information? So 2017, let us to the current version on the next slide. Now, we're down to two academic expectations, critical and creative thinking, communicating and collaborating. And under each of these two academic expectations, we have three indicators. As you see under critical and creative thinking, exploring and understanding, synthesizing and evaluating, creating and constructing, with a definition for each of those. And under communicating and collaborating, conveying ideas, using communication media tools, and collaborating strategically. So we begin to see what we consider to be important skills now in the 21st century, and now on the rubric, how we're going to measure those. Next slide. So on critically and creative thinking, you see our definitions on the left-hand side of the page, and our three indicators. And now, the staff has worked to develop the rubric to measure these under the four headings of below standard, developing, achieving, and exemplary, and helping our staff and our students to understand what it is to fall into these categories and where you might need to move, to move up eventually. Our goal for all students to be at achieving and for many of our students to be at exemplary. Rubrics are often challenging to develop without just going from few, some, many, most, and we really tried to work hard to identify and define what it is for each level under these rubrics. So certainly, you have them in front of you, you can take some time to look at those as well. And our second one on communicating and collaborating, conveying ideas, using communication media tools, and collaborating strategically. So our goal is that all of our students will leave high school at a minimum at the achieving level, and hopefully for many of them at exemplary. So, Mr. Hassis will talk to you some about how we're measuring these and what we're doing to help our students achieve them, and in what ways we're reporting out that information as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ebling. So during the 2016-17 school year last year, we really wanted to spend some time with our teachers, engaging with the language of the rubrics, and having them focus their work on working with the students on these skills, and before we rolled them out officially, have that opportunity to pilot them. So we focused primarily on grades nine through 11, and although many teachers who teach, you know, maybe multiple grades, also incorporated them with their seniors, so we were able to collect data there as well. And basically, the structure of the year was that they spent the first couple of months designing a high-quality performance-based assessment, which, you know, for many, it's a lot of educational jargon, but basically, it's an assessment that creates opportunities for students to have not, you know, a single answer to a question, but have multiple answers. The PBA is authentic in that it represents some sort of real-world context. It provides sustained inquiry, where students engage in a process which will have them ask questions and analyzing resources and applying information. It allows for reflection, it gives students an opportunity for voice and choice, and it gives them an opportunity to be, to critique and revise each other's work, if not their own, and may ultimately actually result in a public product. So these are very rich experiences, and all teachers were working on designing them, and we provided professional development for them as well, research-based methodologies. And then, over the course of November to February, they implemented these PBAs with the students. And the idea would be that they would score the assessments using the rubrics that you just saw. And so I think for the students, it was sort of a crazy experience where all of a sudden they were inundated, you know, over the course of several months, with all of these large projects. But that experience was very educational for us, we learned a lot through it. And in February, during our professional development day, we spent time with the teachers, they sat down with the student work, you know, the teachers came together because these were common assessments, you know, across all ninth-grade English teachers had the same PBA that they implemented with their students. So when the teachers came together, they were able to calibrate their scoring. I think most of us would sit down, you know, with a piece of student work, and you can identify something that was a one on the rubric, right, the below standard score. And most people probably would recognize an exemplary score. But then when the nuances between like levels two and three, or between three and maybe a four, that's what we needed to figure out, because those nuances are really where the students would get feedback on how to improve. So the teachers spent time doing that. Only in education do we call them scoring parties, but that's what we do. And the teachers, through that process, were able to give us a ton of feedback, not only on the PBAs, the assessments, but the rubrics themselves. So through that process, we learned a lot, and we basically looked at the scores of the products, and we kept that data in-house. This wasn't about necessarily reporting out to students what they, how they performed. They were given feedback on the skills, but they weren't necessarily scored via these rubrics and told what those scores were. Teachers gave grades on these assessments based on other rubrics they may have created, but we wanted to start again because we hadn't really shared these academic expectations widely to just analyze that data in-house. So if you could go to the next slide. One thing that we learned was that we designed, purposely designed, the rubrics and the academic expectations to measure the skills of what a 12th grader could achieve when graduating from our high schools. So logically, what would make sense is that if you're in ninth or 10th grade, you may not have acquired the ability or the skill set yet to really perform highly. And that actually played itself out, that was our hypothesis, and that was sort of a test for us to see how well we designed the skills. And sure enough, what you can see here is that across each of the six indicators, more seniors were able to achieve levels three and four than juniors subsequently, then sophomores, and then as freshmen. I wouldn't be concerned, if you're looking at that number and saying to yourself, only two-thirds of our seniors were able to meet these academic expectations. Just as a reminder, you know, this, you know, this, we layered this on top of projects that we were creating. We weren't necessarily spending the year teaching these individual skills, you know, in certain courses, we were just asking teachers to see how the rubrics were for them. This was a test drive more than anything else. And, you know, much of what they've been doing in the past was really content-driven, where this, as you can see, is very much skill-driven. Next slide. So then after all of that, a committee of 12 teachers, six from Ward, six from Ludlow, and two administrators, one from each high school, came together, and we reviewed all of that data that we collected. And basically, what came out of that was some revised language in the rubrics, we created more consistent language, and we helped to differentiate between the levels, because what the teachers were telling us is that it wasn't really clear to them, the language was too vague. And if it was not clear to the teachers, we knew it was not going to be clear to the students, because ultimately, these are tools that the students are going to use to be able to improve in all of these skills. So we changed the language, and we developed an implementation plan. Basically, what we decided is that each department got together at the end of the year last year, and they chose, they looked at their scope of courses over four years in their department, and they set out to assign two indicators per course for each of the courses in their department. And what they would do is, in those courses, they would focus their efforts on those two indicators in order to assess and report them to students and families. That doesn't mean they're not teaching the other indicators, but in order for them to really apply, you know, some instruction around those specific skills, by focusing on two, they felt that that would be the best, the best course of action. And then, instead of one major performance-based assessment, teachers felt that if they could assess students over the course of a year through multiple smaller assignments, that they could really develop, you know, accumulated score over the course of time to report out in late spring to the students. Of course, giving them feedback all along the way, and also teaching those skills all along the way. And so, for a student, once this is fully implemented, once they enter as a freshman and then go through their senior year, over those four years in multiple courses, they will be assessed multiple times across all six indicators. As an example, this is just the English department. Grade nine, the teachers decided that in the curriculum for both of our grade-nine English courses, that conveying ideas and collaborating strategically would be what they assessed. In grade 10, you have exploring and understanding and using communication media tools, and in grade 11, synthesizing, evaluating, creating, and constructing. So just by going through our English program, they're going to be assessed in all of the six areas. Now, if you layer on top of this, say, a student in grade-nine English is also taking Algebra XII, they're going to be exploring and understanding and synthesizing and evaluating, because again, each department chose which indicators they felt they wanted to teach. So, over the course of time, families and students would get lots of feedback on how they are achieving these important skills for the future. Speaking of the future, the, what we have learned is, and we predict, that by using these expectations in the rubrics, not only does it help us identify the critical skills that we want the students to achieve and teachers to teach, as Mr. Ebling mentioned, you know, the skills that industry is telling us is how they want their workers to be when they come to them. And colleges are telling us, you know, these are the skills to be successful in college. It'll also contribute to designing meaningful assessments, provide feedback to students on these particular skills, provide parents with an understanding of how their children are doing on these important skills. And, you know, one thing to discuss at some point is for whether or not these can be considered for inclusion in the future revised graduation requirements, which now, Mr. Cummings, will talk a little bit about in the development of those. Thank you.
Thank you. So to follow up, I'm going to talk about the work that some of us in the district are currently involved in through the Systemic Transformation Seminar series that the Connect Association of Public Schools superintendents is running. Mike, if you could turn to the slide. This work is focused on the development of a portrait of a graduate, and I'll speak about that more in depth in a second. But essentially, what the portrait of a graduate work allows us to do, it creates an opportunity to take this work that has occurred at the school level through the NIASC accreditation process, through the academic expectations, and extend it back out through involvement in- and extend it back out through involvement in the community. So this is a very, while we're working as a, as a district-based team in this, in this work, this work does not, extends past the borders of that team into the community itself through an involvement in the development and the elicitation of thoughts from, from the community stakeholders. Essentially, the Portrait of a Graduate is defined here as the skills and attributes that the community determines should be the hallmarks of their students. And if you, Meg, if you could just go back for a second. We won't jump into this, but there is the link where you can go. This is, this site is organized by EdLeader21, which is a nonprofit educational organization, one of the co-sponsors of the workshops that we're attending. Essentially, if you have the opportunity, you can go to this site. You have to create a login. But you will see at that site roughly around 20 indicators that you have the potential to include into your Portrait of the Graduate. And this is, this is no more than a very valuable tool to which we organize our work as a team and which we can then, as I said before, extend involvement in the community. So the Systemic Transformation Seminars, again, there's five of these. They began in October, they go through February. Their co-facilitators are Ken Kay, who's the leader of Ed21, and Jay McTie. For any of us who involve with education know the name of Jay McTie. He is Mr. UBD. The, the idea here is that the Portrait of a Graduate will extend upon the work that's already begun in district in the development of the academic expectation. So while our headmaster spoke of those two academic expectations, they, they will remain part of our Portrait of the Graduate. But the Portrait of the Graduate is really broader than that. The academic expectations focus in some degree on the, the scholarship skills, the learning skills that our graduates should exhibit. The Portrait of a Graduate is broader than that. It talks about the social, emotional type of skills that we want our graduates to exhibit and to hold. This also aligns with the NIASC accreditation work in which both high schools are currently engaged. There are 169 participants in this, excuse me, 165 educators representing 19 districts in this work. This is the roster of folks coming from Fairfield. So as I said earlier, the, the idea here is that as we develop the Portrait of a Graduate, the work that we are doing in the seminar series will be brought back into the community. And we're having conversations at this point of when this will take place in either the late winter or early spring. But essentially, we, we would work to identify stakeholder group, a group or groups to contribute to the work of the Portrait of the Graduate. Certainly, this would at minimum involve groups of parents and community members. But as we've talked about it, eventually involves students, staff, and as well as representatives from the other, excuse me, the other levels in the school system. It's not enough that this work be only focused on those involved in the high school work. For this work to truly transform a school system, we've got to be thinking backwards. The work that, that work that will lead to the fulfillment of our identified portrait will begin in the pre-K and K levels. And we've got to think about how that's going to transform, transform the work that we're currently doing in those levels. So again, the idea is, once we've identified the stakeholder groups, we elicit input into the creation of the portrait. And then, we determine what the final portrait will be. We synthesize the different viewpoints that we've been able to, to take in. As I said, one of the things we have to think about is we identify that, ultimately, what that outcome should be. We have to think about, we have to look at this current system that we have and say, is it leading to those outcomes? So some, some of those things that we have to consider that may ultimately be impacted by the development of this final portrait is things like our evaluation systems for teachers and administrators. Are we looking for the right instructional practices that are going to produce the graduates? Mr. Hats, it's referred to the fact that much of the past instructional methodology has been focused on the teaching of content and has now moved to the teaching of skills. Is our teacher evaluation system look for and support that? So that's just one example of the different things that we're going to potentially have to review and revise in light of the final Portrait of the Graduate. Further examples of this could be things like our curriculum. Is our curriculum, in some areas, and you, at our last meeting, you saw examples of our curriculum revision schedule. It's our curriculum currently in line to produce the graduates that we wish to produce as part of, as products of the Fairfield Public Schools. Do our assessments link up to the skills we want those graduates to possess? And if not, how do we create new assessments? And how do we help our teachers fulfill the requirements of those new assistants? And also, reporting. If our current reporting system does not speak to the, the rubric system, for example, as portrayed in the academic expectation, do we have to look at a different reporting system or a supplemental reporting system to give the community updates on how we're doing in producing these, our graduates? So we're going to have to, as a result of this work, we're going to have to create an action plan to put the, put the, the further work into practice. And we're going to have to align this work to the current work around graduation requirements. So, and I'll talk about this in a second, but, or give you a sense of where the state is. The, actually, let's just do that. Meg, if you could, I had two slides, please. Yep, there we go. So I, I wanted to just point this out. If you look into the left side of this slide, that is the new graduation requirements as adopted by the state in legislation this past year. The column to the right is our current graduation requirements. A quick glance of that will show you that the delineation, the specific delineations in our graduation requirements as of now, which are defined by current state law and align to current state law, to a large degree disappear in the graduation requirements adopted by the state that will begin with the class of 2023. So our current seventh graders are the groups of students impacted by this change. So this broadening of categories and the pulling away of specific types of detail, like, for example, the fact that four years of English, which has probably been around for 200 years in the graduation requirements of the state of Connecticut, essentially comes away by state mandate. Now, that's not to say that a local board of education can't still require it, but the state is no longer requiring it. U.S. history, been there since we've had U.S. history. Essentially goes away under the new requirement. So there's a, an opportunity of a wide, more wide-open palette on which we can paint this Portrait of the Graduate, which is tremendously freeing and also tremendously scary. There's a lot of, so there's a lot of work here still to be done. And the state is, is looking, quite honestly, to create that opportunity, different pathways for students to meet their graduation requirements. But again, the state is giving a lot of control back to the local boards of education and making these final determinations.
Before our students go into shock, I wanted to just highlight something that, in Fairfield, what we have done for many years is a full-year course would give you two credits. Whereas in, in other districts or in the state's definition, it would only be a one-credit for a full-year course. So, you know, technically, the way that we establish our number of credits now, we, we require 43 of our graduates. So, but we just converted so that it could be easily compared to what the state has put out. So that's why it's 21.5. The other things to highlight real quickly between the left and the right is that you'll notice that health and, both physical education and health have now add, they've expanded their realm where it's physical education and wellness and health and safety. And one difference is that currently, in our graduation requirements, we only require a half of a credit of health, which amounts to, for our students, one quarter each of the four years. And that is expanded to one full credit in the new graduation requirements, which likely will have FTE implications. The other change you'll notice is that world language is now has a one-credit requirement where we do not currently have a world language requirement under our graduation standards.
Give me, Meg, if you could go back one, one slide, thank you. So just to sum up, our next steps is to evolve our stakeholder, identify and involve our stakeholder groups in the creation of the Portrait of the Graduate work going forward. To determine what else needs to change within the school system in response to the creation of that ultimate portrait, how are we as a system going to have to make any modifications to make sure that we're on track to produce that Portrait of the Graduate? And finally, we are going to continue to work with members of the, the other districts that are involved in this work, essentially what's called a community of practice. But with the idea essentially being here, that many hands make at least lighter work, how can we learn together and work together to determine best practices, apply those best practices to the work we're doing? So I think that's it for us.
So I'll call on our English teacher last, just to give your heart a chance to kind of recover. But I'll ask if the students have any questions or comments that they want to make. Have you go first, if you do. If you don't, that's fine. Use the microphone.
So will the PBA still be an assessment? Or will it just be throughout the whole year?
So what we've done by giving the teachers that opportunity to look at two of the indicators by grade level, you won't see probably that full-scale, one-shot PBA during the year, but rather multiple assessments during the year that will allow them to assess by the end of the year where you are on that rubric.
Okay, I have another question. So also, like, for the graduation requirement, it seems like you don't really have an exact, like, set requirement of what it's going to be yet. But also, you said that the students won't really be able to, or won't always be able to see the exact rubric. So how do they know if they're not reaching that requirement? Like, how will they know?
So I think what you're remembering is that I said, in our pilot year last year, there were some teachers who utilized the rubrics very explicitly with the students and others who just sort of layered on top of the rubrics that they were using for the assignment. But going forward, this will be very present, hung up at every classroom, attached to every assignment, you know, that they're using it for. So it'll be very explicit for the students, so, and transparent. So there'll be no issues there at all.
I think one of the things we found in using the PBAs with the students is we were trying to do all six indicators on one assessment, and it was too big a magilla. So by breaking it out now, we may be able to measure just an indicator on one assessment. And it could be, you know, a homework assignment.
Other questions?
I was just wondering, how soon would these implementations be present in these schools? Like, we're starting to see visible changes.
So the, the new state requirements apply to the current seventh graders, the class of 2023. So in our work, as we make decisions about whether or not, you know, how we'll, how we'll adapt those to us, we, you know, we'll, we'll create a plan of implementation. It may be that we start with some of them for the current eighth graders just to, you know, roll the plan out a little bit more slowly. But, you know, that's, we're still in the discussion stage of that. But all of those will be in place for the current seventh graders.
So you're, you're off the hook.
Provided you graduate. More questions?
I noticed in the, the new graduation requirements, the lack of a computer proficiency exam. Was there, do you know if there was reasoning behind that? Or, I'm sure there was. I just would like to know if you guys know the reason?
That is not a specific requirement in the new state guidelines. That was a holdover from past state guidelines. There was a tech requirement essentially that students had to fulfill. But that's no longer specifically required in the new state guidelines.
Sure?
Yeah, it was just regarding the test itself that we still do take and kind of the lack of some of the programs that, that actually are.
Out-of-date programs.
Yeah, just some of the programs aren't really, they're kind of out of date. And so to be tested on them and have them be a graduation requirement at this point doesn't make sense, but I don't know how much we are involved in changing that.
Well, you're sitting at the right table to ask that question. It is the Board of Education's purview to, to adopt or change any of the graduation requirements, so.
As long as they comply with state requirements.
Of course.
Can I go?
So if, think of other questions you want to ask. Feel free to stay or feel free to go, at your pleasure. Two other board members, Ms. Pitko.
Ms. Jacobson.
Ms. Jacobson?
She had a follow-up on that. No, I didn't have a follow-up, it's a new question.
Okay, at the moment, those two, okay. Ms. Pitko.
I have an easy question. I'm curious, what part of the process are you both in for NIASC, for the two high schools?
I'll go first because we're first. So our visit has been established for March of 2019. And so really, step one for us in the self-study, you know, and we spend a year doing a self-study analysis prior to that, as you well know. And it's the first step in that is to implement the Endicott Survey, which our representatives had talked about earlier. So we did that at the end of November. And today, utilizing our half-day of PD, our teachers engaged in their first meetings of our standards committees, just getting to know what the standards are all about, what indicators are going to be required of us. And they started brainstorming evidence to collect in order to show it. But basically, over the course of January to December of all of 2018, those committees will be working together, gathering evidence, writing reports, approving the reports, and then we'll be preparing for the visit in the spring of 19.
Ms. Jacobson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me, that's okay. Let me just update you a little bit. And then, it may be a topic for a future board meeting. But Fairfield Ward is fortunate to be under the new guidelines of NIASC 2020, a vision for learning. The process has changed dramatically from the current process. We'll be having a collaborative conference visit with four members of a visiting team from NIASC in October of 2018. They'll come, they'll look at our self-study report, they'll look at our growth plan that we're planning for the high school, our priority areas that we've identified as a school. Our students have already participated in their survey and completed it. All of our faculty have. We're currently in our parent survey stage. It's not the Endicott Survey, it's a different survey. Then, they come back two years later in 2020 for the full visit to really examine what our priorities were in our growth areas and what progress we made. So we're excited because it's much more aligned to the current trend around school improvement planning. And that, that's what we want to do.
We accuse them of using Fairfield as a guinea pig because having two high schools in town. But we are at the cusp of when the old requirements end. 2019 will be the last year of those, 2020 the start of the others. They denied it.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, I just had a question about the PE requirement between old and new. Right now, we have a quarter a year for each year, giving us our one-credit. I see under the new guidelines, which, if I can just remember picturally right now, it's still the one-credit. But can we envision or contemplate a change in the makeup of how that's delivered in the future? It's just because it was something that students did bring up a lot about during our run and contemplating their needs, especially during senior year, about what's going on in that year for them. So just curious on that.
You remember correctly that the requirement stays the same at one-credit. And we, because the definition is now expanded to physical education and wellness, what that does, it provides us an opportunity to explore other opportunities. One of the main tenets that we didn't really cover, but is, but is mentioned in some of the limited analysis that has come out of this, is that they're really looking for multiple. So that's going to expand lots of areas, which might include online learning, or distance learning, or other opportunities for students to achieve credit away from the traditional, you know.
Ladder.
Ladder that we've had in most all high schools. So the world is a little bit of our oyster right now, so we are in some discussions with our departments about that.
Thank you.
Ms. Pitko has a follow-up. Okay.
I just wanted to ask if multiple path needs include maybe earning credit because you're playing a sport instead of taking the PE requirement? Is that a thought?
That's a consideration, but as we currently understand it, that that potentiality does not yet exist under state statute.
Ms. Maxon Cunnelli.
I was hoping to defer to Ms. Leeper, because I'm hoping she has one of my 11 questions, and I could knock it off then. If that's okay.
Ms. Leeper.
You touched on this just briefly, but I was wondering if you could expand the way in which this accreditation process is aligned or works in conjunction with the district improvement plan.
So the 2020 NIASC visit requires a school to go through the self-reflection process, and that's where Fairfield Ward is going through now. So they measure us against the five standards. The school has a rubric that it's using on each of those five standards. Each of the five standards are broken down into various principles, and the school has to, through the faculty, they have to rate themselves on each of the five standards. They use some of the survey results from the students and the parents and the faculty as evidence, but they have to find evidence to support each of their ratings according to the rubric. And there's four categories on the rubric. So that's a process, like Mr. Hatzis was mentioning from Ludlow, they were working, so were we today, on writing that report, finding our evidence, and each of the subcommittees, so to speak, are starting to look at that rubric to measure themselves. Eventually, the faculty will decide where they land. From that, the faculty identifies, these are the three priorities our school wants to work on. For example, we currently have a school improvement plan. Our three areas are around the academic expectations. For example, at Ward, we're focusing on creative and critical thinking this year. The SRBI plan, right, intervention strategies to support all of our students. And also, we're looking at ways to strengthen student and staff and adult relationships within our building. So we've identified three priority areas. That's the school improvement plan aligned to the district improvement plan. What will happen, you know, with some foresight maybe, but what we're thinking will happen with the self-reflection report is, it may not be those exact three areas, but it's going to be similar to that process for the faculty to say, here's where we think we need to focus our energies as a school. Doesn't mean we have to meet all, it means we still have to meet all five standards, but it gives us a focus area. Then they come back and measure our work to achieve those three priority areas and what success we've had. So that's where it's kind of that school improvement idea.
I have other questions.
You have the floor.
Okay. You mentioned that the rubric, the excelling is for what you expect your 12th graders to achieve. So in the grading logistics for your ninth and 10th graders, how are you breaking down that rubric? So they're not all getting 30s and 40s. They have realistic achievable growth to make within the grade.
Absolutely. So basically, it's not the exemplary that we would expect for 12th grade, but achieving. So it's the level three. That's okay. But just to clarify that. So basically, ninth and 10th graders are going to be assessed on the standards of the curriculum that's written for grade nine and 10. So their grades technically will not reflect their achievement of these skills necessarily. And it doesn't mean that a ninth grader couldn't get a three or a four, but basically, what we have found, and just in that pilot, you know, year where that was really setting a baseline for ourselves, you know, we discovered that, you know, that maturity has a factor, experience has a factor, you know, deeper content, and even just brain development of adolescents, you know, over time, in dealing with more complex ideas, all of that plays itself out over the course of the four years of high school. But they still could get As and Bs in their classes, even if they may get a one or a two on the rubric here.
So what feedback are they getting on their development within the rubric? Are they getting, like, separate to the grades, some feedback on their skill acquisition, if you will, within this framework?
Yeah, part of the process for the teachers will be, as they are introducing the assignments in which they'll be assessed on these things, they'll also be talking about the skills and how to accomplish them, you know, and strategies that they can use to move across the rubric as they are, you know, getting that feedback over the course of the years that they experience them.
Awesome. One last question. It's somewhat related. In talking about the profile of the graduate, and you touched on it, and maybe you're still in process, but how will you measure the acquisition of those types of skills for our students?
Thanks, I appreciate it. That is something we'd have to consider. First of all, once we know what those other focus areas would be, then we would start to think about how they would be assessed. I think what, you know, that's where we start to have to think about a reporting system, whether that's appropriate or not, and what would be the most appropriate way to report the acquisition of those skills out. I do want to touch on, just follow up on the last question you asked, because it relates to this as well. It's important to remember that the identification of the outcomes gives us the opportunity to think about not only what this looks like in ninth grade, but what it looks like in grades preceding ninth grade. So we have, we will, once, you know, now that the academic expectations have been determined, we can begin to use these to think about what they look like on a fifth grade reading or math assignment, for example, and start to progress students along. Ultimately, the creation of every, any rubric is, one of the intentions of it is that it has to be replaced every number of years, because over time, as kids acquire the skills, you can move up that, you can essentially start to erase that lower level and start to replace the upper levels. You move everything over.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you were next, or Ms. Maxon Cunnelli?
Sure, I've got a few. So.
You want to defer to?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Gerber.
This is a pretty quick question. Just regarding the Portrait of the Graduate, when you talk about involving stakeholder groups, are there certain ways that you're planning on doing that?
Our initial thought at this point, and we're going to be developing this out more further over the next month, but is really to use a protocol to engage in conversation. So to set aside a meeting time, for example, and invite members of the community in, and basically ask, you know, two or three questions that pulls out the information we want to determine. Whether that's members of the community, or we decide that we're going to do it with a group of ninth graders, or a group of the high school teachers or middle school teachers, essentially would be those same three questions, and really involving, like I said, a relatively simple protocol in order to base the findings on the conversations that follow.
Any other board members before we close out with Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli? Mrs. Vitale.
I just want some clarification on these skills. Is it possible for, they're going to be measured across the whole experience, the whole high school experience. Is it possible that students may have a skill set in one discipline and not another, if teachers are not necessarily required to test if they're looking at two instead of all six? So is there a way to measure over the course of the four years that the skill is transferable to STEM to humanities?
Yes, yeah. I believe you're right on target with that, because you may find students that have a passion or have a skill set in one of those particular areas over another, and they'll be able to achieve that in a particular discipline over the course of the four years than they might not one of the others. So certainly, that could be the case.
And a follow-up to that, just in terms of the high school graduation requirements, this is more to Dr. Jones. Do you foresee, as the graduation requirements change, the structure of the district in terms of STEM humanities being, it's not going to be social studies, English? I know that's kind of looking ahead a little bit. And if so, starting in the middle school, being that it's the seventh graders that are really going to be affected by this right now, you know, starting, not necessarily in high school right now, but in the middle school.
Yeah, that's a big question. I think, you know, as we're, the work that we're doing right now, I think is exciting work, because the state has really opened the door, and is thinking very progressively, and there are districts all across the country doing really progressive things. I think when we look at, more than anything, I think in our system, it would start with voice and choice for students where, for, you know, over 100 years, 200 years, we've really locked students into boxes, and you've had to take a particular pathway, regardless of whether that's really where your passion was or your interest was. And I think you're going to see with these new graduation requirements, the doors, that's why even when you look at STEM, there are some students who would be better served instead of taking a traditional science course, taking something that is more engineering and technology-based, because you know that's more likely going to be a pathway that they're on. So I think you're going to see the door open, but it has to, I think you have to, the work starts in high school. And one of the things I actually had in the superintendent's report that I was noting is Ward hosted all of our administrative team, was that last week, all the days running together? And we were all broken up into teams, and they gave us part of this rubric, and we all went to classrooms, so that we were learning to apply that. And one of the conversations that we had at the end in the group that I was in was elementary and middle school principals talking about, wow, we really need to push this down to elementary and middle. It would look different, but making sure it really is systemic pre-K through 12. And that was exciting, because it was driven from the principals that were there observing. So I hope that answers.
One follow-up question, then we'll go on to Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. The high school graduation requirements changes were advanced several years ago. They kept getting pushed off, and pushed off. So we'll wait to see whether the legislature pushes it off again. But at what point will this board start being kind of educated on the cost implications of these changes? That's for the superintendent more than...
I actually don't see this as having huge cost implications outside of what a normal educational budget is on an annual basis. Now, if you try to keep in place everything you've done for 100 years, and you don't actually change, and you try to layer on top of it, then certainly you're going to see that. But I'll use technology as an example. You know, we talk a lot about technology integration, and when you actually implement technology at a really great level and do it well, you actually see all those cost shifts on things like copier costs, and so I don't see it as cost implication. And, you know, this year, you'll see our high school science curriculum. It's going to be, you know, I think it's about $600,000 is where it's setting in this, next year's budget, but that would have been there with an old science curriculum or a new science curriculum, but the tools may look different.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
Okay. First, I just have a personal plea from someone who may hypothetically have gone through a NIASC experience, and you are, has hypothetically dealt with the gathering of evidence. I just earnestly beg you to gather as much of it ahead of time as possible. It's a wonderful opportunity to give teachers the illusion that they're all part of the process, but it ended up being an awful lot of just paperwork chasing that was a frustrating use of time. That's just a personal aside. And also, to Mr. Orban, interesting that you bring up that computer proficiency test. We've been having some conversations about that, so just thought that was interesting. I promise it was not a setup. So my first question, and it actually is going to bring back to you, and starting with Mr. Ebling, when you were going over the skills and the idea of what we want our graduates to be able to do, and the part that is of concern to me, and it came up again, Mr. Cummings on the, one of the second, I guess the fourth to last slide, is the idea of content versus skills. And, Mr. Ebling, you used a phrase, you know, what we want our graduates to be able to do, and of course, the phrase that teachers are used to with curriculum work is what we want our students to know and be able to do. And this is something that stands really as a tremendous concern of mine, because I don't buy into, we don't need to teach them content because they can always look it up. Obviously, that's far oversimplifying, but just as a stance, they can't know that there's something to look up if they don't obviously have that content background. So I was wondering, how is that fact, I mean, obviously, this is a skills rubric, and we've been, I know I've been asking about this back with the social studies curriculum and prior. So I do recognize that, but do you see content being let go in order to do this skills work?
So it is a skills rubric, as you mentioned, no question about it, because these are academic expectations that apply nine through 12 in every discipline. So our art teachers, our technology education teachers are using the same academic expectations in the work in their classroom, whether they're exploring or understanding, or communicating and collaborating. So any of those, any of those skills should be applied in any of the disciplines. But you hit on a very strong point, it's through the content, right, that we're able to deliver these skills. So the content, it's a balance. There's no question about it. Both are equally important. We do need to teach content. We have some courses that the content is very prescribed for us. For example, in our advanced placement classes, we have other classes and other courses where maybe in some of our elective areas, the content isn't as prescribed, but still, we teach our skills through the content.
I would just add quickly that the board approved Fairfield Public Schools' curriculum documents are alive and well, and they all include, you know, the content standards that, you know, that you all had a chance to read and approve. So those will continue forward and be revised, you know, in the regular cycle, but the content will always remain a strong, you know, piece of it.
Right, because obviously, some of that mastery is of content knowledge. So I just think of, I'm not quite sure how grammar would factor into these things, but it's definitely in that curriculum still. My second question was, you mentioned that NIASC, and I can't quite quote this, asks you, how do you identify and then report out where students are? And I don't know if this is too ahead of the curve, but obviously, this would be something where eventually, however this factors into graduation requirements, there's going to have to be some tech piece to, and I don't know if this is going to be available through Infinite Campus or something else, along with a student requirement or expectation that they're checking that, so that they know the areas where they have not met that yet, and they know that in courses that they need to. I know I'm speaking vaguely, I think you understand what I'm getting at, but how is that, have you looked at that yet, or is that a piece still to be determined?
We're working on it. We tried a few things last year with our teachers to have them kind of pilot it for us. It was cumbersome, so we need to find a little better way. When we meet with, for example, both Fairfield Ward and Fairfield Ludlow are fortunate to have the same liaison to NIASC, who's the executive director, George Edwards, and when we met with him with our steering committee, that was kind of one of the things that came up. He said, every school's struggling with that. So while they're requiring it, no one has a great answer for it. But we are, we did work with our tech department last year. We came up with a plan. We tried it, it was cumbersome, so we're still working on it.
Okay. One thing, Mr. Hatzis, that you mentioned when you're on the slide for results of the in-house data collection, and you made reference, and I wish I'd been able to quote you better, how we were not at this point teaching to these skills yet. And I was wondering if you could clarify what you meant by that.
Sure. By the way, conveying ideas would be where grammar would fit, if you look at it carefully, because it's about articulating to an intended audience using appropriate language and evidence, so.
Thank you.
It's there.
Thank you.
But yes, what I should have probably clarified with that is, it's not like we haven't been teaching the idea of exploring ideas, or of finding evidence, or of synthesizing, but with the language specifically of these rubrics, if students, you know, with any rubric, when a student has that specific language, and that they can gear, you know, their work toward improving in that specific area, that's generally what I meant. They weren't used to this language. So for the students that got to see it, it was more about them understanding, you know, why they were getting feedback on something that, you know, they hadn't necessarily seen in years prior, you know. So it was, you know, we always have been focusing on skills as well as content, but with these specific... feedback on something that, you know, they hadn't necessarily seen in years prior, you know. So it was, you know, we, we always have been focusing on skills as well as content, but with these specific terms, some of the students may not have been as familiar with. So, and as the teachers were getting used to the rubrics, and as I mentioned, we revised the rubrics because some of the teachers found the language very vague and not discerning enough between the levels. So that was some of the improvements that we made in the current revision. So that, that's, that's really what I meant by that. So when, when, when teachers were assessing the students, you know, they were kind of struggling with, okay, this one is sort of a two, this one is sort of a three, where are we going to fall? So, you know, that's why I think that as a baseline data, that's, all we could call it at this point is baseline data.
Okay. And in the gathering all of this information, there was the line that assessment will be done over the course of multiple assignments throughout the school year, culminating in a score report in late spring. Does that, is that specifically to that tech piece of, or how is this being done? In other words, if they get a three at one point and then they get a two later, is there a sense there's going to be averaging them, or if you hit the three, you hold the three?
It will be, it will be up to the teachers to assign that one grade. So they're not, the students are going to get the feedback in the classroom, but it's not going to be reported officially like on the report card until the spring, when there'll be a cumulated grade. So, you know, we're still working on that process. You know, it, it probably, we like to look at it more as a standards-based approach, where once a student has achieved that standard, they, they will have achieved that grade, you know. And over the course of time, hopefully, they're improving to get a higher grade as the course, as the course of the year goes on. You know, averaging, as we all know, doesn't necessarily always tell the full story. So we look at it more as a standards-based approach, where teachers will be applying, the, they'll be measuring students at the level that they feel they have achieved by that time in the spring.
Okay. Thank you. And I was, you, you alluded to this also, but I was wondering about that group that is engaging in the seminars. And I will admit, there are two names on your list from Fairfield with whom I'm not familiar. But are we looking in the tail end of this to invite some middle school administrators to join in on this conversation? But again, there are two names I don't know.
This Friday, I have a middle school administrators meeting. And one of the things we're going to do as a group is look at that portrait of a graduate webpage and begin to familiarize that group of administrators, that's all the principals and assistant principals, as well as the program directors, familiarize them with the page and begin to look, excuse me, with the website, and begin to look at just what those attributes are. Not necessarily to complete one ourselves as a group, but to begin to get people to think around that particular, using that tool. One of the, one of the more difficult aspects of using that tool, and we found this as, as the group of nine of us were, were meeting last month, is that while it gives you 20 attributes, it really asks that you select six. So that's a, that's a difficult work to do as an individual, never mind as a group of nine, to come to agreement around what those six are. With the idea being that you can only focus on so many things to do them well. So as we, we already recognize that the great challenge will be as a, as a school system and as a community, to really focus down on what those, those attributes are, particularly when so much work has already gone into some of the academic expectations and that, that base work that's been done for quite a number of years, as we talked about tonight. So we'll involve the middle schools and we'll bring the elementary school principals in as well on this.
Okay. Thank you. And are you, do you still think that you are on track for the idea that after all the community input, after the staff pulls together, synthesizes all of that input, it gets to policy? Is the goal still that this would be before the board in June? Do you think that timeline, that timetable is possible? I mean, these, because with these seminars going all the way into February, I would think that might be really tight.
It, I won't argue with you. It will be very tight. I think we would love a greater sense of time, but we have to look at the fact that these new, these new requirements are in place for the class of 2023. To be fair to the work, and not only to the students that will be in eighth grade next year, but the work that we may need to do, or we know we were going to have to do to meet those requirements. For example, the construction of a world language courses, is that's now a requirement. Looking at what the phys ed and wellness course, courses options may be, or the health and safety options may be, as well as, and it's important to keep in mind, the, the, how we're going to fulfill, are, are we as a, as a district going to stay that while the state's giving us some flexibility around those humanities credits, for example, we're still going to hold the four years of English, anticipating your?
That's my next question.
Yes. You know, we, there's a lot of, of work that we have to do in a relatively short period of time, but the state hasn't given us much more time than that to actually do that work. Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to construct things over the course of next year
Right.
in order to be on place for those, those students as they enter ninth grade.
Okay.
Can I interject a question, following up on your last question? Are you assuming that any change to board policy that would be needed to implement this, you'd want by the end of June?
Personally, yes. I, I think we need it by the end of June.
So therefore, the end of June for vote, the first meeting of June for first reading. So then I think I would have to ask the chair of the policy committee to work with Mr. Cummings, to say, in order for you, your committee, to be able to vote on that schedule and get it to us on that schedule, after the meeting lest his heart stop when you tell him, well, then I need your work by X date. Because in order to go through our process, it, you can't bring it to us the night before.
Oh, no. I've already cleared the calendar for April, May. I'm doing nothing but this.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Mr. Cummings and I, I guess, first spoke about this back in October.
Yes.
So this has been ongoing. And that, speaking of four years of English, and that's just to clarify that point, that with the freedom allowed of the nine credits in, in the various categories, the district can still stay, but we hold by four years of English, by U.S. history, something like that. That's still part of the conversation.
Still within, essentially, the state has given more authority to the district to make those determinations.
Good of them. And then my last question, and this is wondering about a teacher freedom thing with implementing the rubrics, which I actually thought, thought there was some very nice choices in there of words, because I know these are brutal. I have to admit, I personally hate these. And the reason that I do is that within each one, there are so many points, and I don't like holistic grading. Does a teacher have the freedom, and I would think especially maybe in ninth or 10th grade, where these kids, students are looking for the feedback? Because if you're told a two, well, which part was the two? Was some of it actually a one? Did I, was I close to the three on these? That if they wanted to divide them out more separately, granted, ultimately, I suppose, if, if this becomes a graduation requirement, it's going to have to be with everyone doing it the same way. But would a teacher have the freedom within these categories to break those, does that make sense, that you break them down to the specific elements that are divided?
That was actually one of the precise arguments the teachers made about why they would prefer to just focus on two rather than all six over the course of, in one course. Because it allowed them to break these out. I, many teachers, basically, what they'll do is they'll, they'll underline the segment of the box that is the two, and then the segment of the box that's the three, and the segment of the statement that's number four. So, so that, the, so the students can see how that's broken out. So there's a variety of ways. And then, you know, if they have to holistically give that a number, you know, and again, that's one of the advantages for not doing this in one implementation. Over the course of time, if they see more of those underlying statements moving towards the three or toward the four, you know, that's what, that's how they would holistically grade them over the course of many of these assignments. So, so absolutely, and I did want to follow up with one other thing. Ms. Kempner and Mr. Flynn, who I think were the two names, I'm guessing.
I know Mr. Flynn.
Oh, okay.
Mr., you're right about Kempner.
Ms. Kempner is a teacher at Fairfield Ludlow High School.
And Ms. Montor- Montorsi.
Montori, Montorsi is our director of people services at Ludlow as well.
Okay. So thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure that they had that freedom and that it wasn't, where it's so strict in that regard that you can only just circle the box. Thank you.
Well, I understand Ms. Pitko and then Mrs. Jacobson, I think, has the last question.
I just have a follow-up to that. I want, I, I think you said this during your presentation, but I just want to make sure, pigging back on what Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly is saying, is that are they going to continually collaborate, calibrate on how they're grading it? Because like she said, being holistic, you want to make sure that they're, they're, for ninth grade, on the same par as skills.
Yes, because what I think we've done is by allowing them to pick two of the indicators for each grade level, all of our teachers are assigned to work in a PLT, professional learning team. Those are opportunities for them to bring examples of student work to that group to kind of calibrate where they are on, on the rubric.
Ms. Jacobson.
Sorry, just one last question. Using our baseline data that you have, it's showing that roughly 70% of our 12th graders were, just as a baseline. If this was to become a graduation requirement within a couple of years, knowing we're not rolling that up from kindergarten out of the gate for the class of 2023, what is the plan for those that are off the market, off the mark, I mean, I'm sorry, to make sure they get to three to graduate?
Well, first of all, they would be, the, these would be applied from their freshman year. So they would have multiple opportunities to learn the skills, be taught the skills, practice the skills, and demonstrate the skills. So, you know, these are seniors, you know, basically cold, you know, like a cold application of it, right. So, so that, that's one of the reasons why I say, you know, don't ignore the numbers, but, but, you know, they're, I don't think that they would be representative of what we would expect to see, you know, a couple of years from now out of the seniors that were expected, if these were to be a part of the graduation requirements. You know, so I think there'll be multiple opportunities. And just like every assessment that the state has ever required of us, whether it was, you know, the old CAPT test, you know, we always had to create a plan for any senior that didn't meet those proficiency levels, where, you know, sometimes they would have to create a portfolio of work demonstrating the skills. So that it most likely would be, there would be an opportunity for them, maybe a course. I mean, there, there'd be lots of ways that we could explore.
Okay. So we're thinking about the contingency of that in the process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to the next topic. I think it was a good presentation, a good Q and A.
Nothing, nothing else from our students before you leave?
[laughing]
Thank you.
They'll, they'll submit questions to you later and you can give written responses. First reading for capital projects. We'll deal with the capital one at a time, the capital projects, then the non-recurring projects. Again, just for quick reference, these projects come off of the infamous waterfall chart. And they pretty much fall in order based on the way we've prioritized them. Things change from time to time, and a piece of equipment fails, or a roof blows off, or something happens. And so we have to rejig, jiggle the projects, but for the most part, they're, they're straight from the long-range plan that we have. Mr. Cullen, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. Good evening. Before I get started, I have some staff behind me that are here in support and may have to come up and answer any questions, so I'd like to recognize them. Sherman Elementary School Principal Eileen Roxby, Mill Hill Elementary School Principal Kevin Chase, manager of construction, security, and safety, Sale Morbeto, and Director of Information Technology, Nancy Burns. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to present and propose the 2018, 2019 capital project request. These requests will require the town to approve funding and approval of the project, so that we can assign a building committee, because both projects will be able to be submitted to the state of Connecticut for reimbursement. So they're very important. The first one's Sherman Elementary School. Sherman Elementary School is labeled as phase three due to the fact that the school is located in a watercoast conservation area FEMA-regulated. If we wanted to do a very large project at Sherman Elementary School of 15, 20, 25 million, we would have to raise the building up eight to nine feet and meet a bunch of regulations through FEMA. So because we haven't been able to fund that or go in that direction, we've been doing Sherman in phases. If you had an opportunity to look at the booklet, since we sent it out, there's a wealth of information in there about all the breakdowns for all the phases that we did do and where we are today. So if you want me to go into a little bit of information about the FEMA regulation, I can do that.
Board members want to?
Yes, please.
Go into that detail?
At least a summary.
Sure. The FEMA regulation's about four pages long, but essentially, what it says in summary is, you cannot spend over 50% of the value of the building at any given fiscal year. And then, once you do do a renovation or addition project, you have to wait 12 months before you can apply again. So in speaking with the planning and zoning department, James Went, the good news is that Sherman Elementary School's value of the property and building have gone up. The, today's value is $5,476,200.
Is that the combined value, or is that just the structure?
It's just the structure.
Okay.
So we would have to stay under 50% for construction, which is $2,738,100. Our phase three project is budgeted at 3.2 million. I just need to say something quickly about that. In the waterfall schedule and the facility plan, it's always been 3 million. In speaking with the superintendent of schools, we wanted to add in there a new site request to do a proposed parent drop-off and pickup off of Fern Street into the side of the building. Also do some things into the front of the building where the bus loop is dropped off and extend the island, some more parking, and possibly replace the Batuminous Pathway that's used by the walkers from Burt Street to the back of the school. So those got added into the project to bring it to 3.2 million.
Does that not put us over that 2.73?
That's my next point.
Okay.
My next point is to say that, that, the FEMA regulation has exemptions. So it's, it's long and lengthy, but I had a discussion with James Went. They don't include things like architectural engineering fees, survey fees, environmental, any consultants that are working on the job. So we can probably take 300,000 to 500,000 off of the top of that number for those items. They also don't include what's called FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, that would pick up like the replacement of the lockers. Those will be deemed maintenance items. Anything where we are upgrading existing information technology data stuff, closets, life safety that's already existing, but we want to update it. So we start looking at all those things. And I've come up with a number around just under 2.5 million, I think, will be regulated by FEMA. And I'm kind of on the fence about the air conditioning piece. The fact that we did on the last phase, mechanical means of fresh air and didn't do the air conditioning, that may already exist, and we might be able to fight that just adding air conditioning was a maintenance item. And that's a large number. That's almost a million dollars. So I think we're going to be okay. Once we get a project team on board and a building committee and they start working with conservation and planning and zoning, I'm sure we can work on the numbers and we'll be under the FEMA regulation. So that kind of gives you a nutshell summary of the FEMA piece.
Do you have any other comments that you want to make on the Sherman project overall?
Uh, no.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Asa.
Well, the Sherman project has been on the docket for quite a while, and I've got all of these different books over the years with it there. And I know it got moved at one point. One question I had, especially because since you do have to be cognizant of the cost with the whole FEMA cap, is that in our June 2015 facilities book, it said $3 million in 2021. And then August 2016, it said $3 million in 2017. And now it says 3.2 million, and I understand that point two is the, the additional paving, in 2019. So I'm just, that, that 3 million hasn't changed at all? And it's gone from 2017 to 2021 to 2017 to 2019? So
Yes.
I mean, is this, are you confident that that 3 million is going to still be okay? Just because?
Yeah, I think the $3 million number was a placeholder when we started all of the Sherman projects. It seemed to work when we talked with James Went of planning and zoning and conservation. That seemed to be the number that worked and fit in all of the the phases that we did since we did the annex building.
Okay. And then, another question, too, when you talked about the annex. So, I know for both Phase One and Phase Two, the SBSBC was the, kind of, the building committee for this project. Would they do it as well for this?
I'd, my opinion would be, I'd love to see them do it again, but I don't get to pick the building committee.
Be easier. So, that's up to the first selectmen who to decide, but is that something that you would recommend?
Yes, we would. I mean, right now, the SBSBC, it's the Special Project Standing Building Committee, is handling our roof projects.
Right, and the security.
If they seem to wind down, there'll be an opening for them to take on Sherman, which would be nice.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stacia.
Okay, so, I will admit that I think we're getting very, I mean, I understand your numbers and the exemptions and everything, but right now, figuring 2.5 million as our number of attributable costs that are regulated by FEMA puts us within about 8% of that cap. Comparing some of the stuff that we're looking at here on the core upgrades and renovations with cost estimates, comparing some of that stuff to, let's say, Holland Hill, which is current, and we have current numbers now, do we see any drastic differences here? Are there any red flags that, that you made any adjustments in here regarding that? Because I'll be honest with you, this project has to happen, but I have serious concerns on some of the costs here being realistic.
I think probably one of the numbers that concerns me is the air conditioning piece, because to add to the existing mechanical means of fresh air, there needs to be cooling units, cooling coils installed on the roof. That would be my only concern, would be, you know, is the roof structure strong enough to hold it with the existing equipment that's there by adding it, or will have to be put on the ground and fed up to the roof? But that's the only number-
I don't think it's possible for FEMA guidelines.
It's the only number I would have a concern about.
Okay. So, that being said, that being the biggest number, a third of the project, really, does it concern you that, that being a million dollars, and if we're within 200 of that threshold? I mean, what do we do, what do we do if we get into this and then find that we're really at a $3 million cost of FEMA-regulated?
Sure. Your first question is, I wasn't concerned, because I mentioned before, I believe we might be able to argue that adding the air conditioning to the existing system could be a maintenance item. So, this whole million dollars might be deemed exempt. So, I've talked to James Went about it. He said he could look at it closer, but the fact that we already have the system in place and we're just adding cooling to it could be an upgrade, a maintenance upgrade.
Okay.
Secondly, something that I wouldn't want to do, and I'm sure Eileen Roxby doesn't want to hear, but if we couldn't afford to do everything with the $3 million, we would have to do a Sherman Phase Four.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Sorry.
No, I mean, because I think we have to-
Have to wait the 12 months.
Yeah, I think we have to, I don't want to say that's going to hap, but we have to have that in the back of our minds, because we are, we do have strict guidelines to-
Oh, I do.
So, my next question is regarding, I see the, bear with me one second, removal of something for increased enrollment here. APR, APR stage removal for increased enrollment. How much room are you anticipating that adding?
What we've done at the elementary schools is we find that, in working with the principals, they like the idea of adding a small addition onto the gym and making the gym the place for events, for larger events for the school instead of the APR. And then, we can take the stage out of the APR, expand that floor, and they get increased seating for cafeteria space and the children to eat.
Okay, so we're not, in essence, changing the capacity of the building in any way?
No.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't do anything. Okay. I think for this one, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Just a, just a quick follow-up on the, on the APR issue. So, am I, I don't understand, and forgive this is a doopy question, you're going to convert some of that space to educational space, classroom space?
No, the, the APR, we removed the stage and put an addition onto the gymnasium that becomes the stage off the gym.
Well, right, it's just, you mentioned in terms of increased enrollment. The thing that I didn't see here was any cost for actually changing the space. I mean, is the line item simply for removal? But does that, does that encapsulate-
Yes.
Renovations for, okay.
Yes, it does.
That's my basic question. Thank you.
Can I point out the half-million-dollar figure at the, next to the last line, new stage addition off of gymnasium? So, I think that's the line that would be the new addition for the gym, and then the other line is removing the stage.
Right, no, my, my, I was just, I was talking about the conversion of the space for where you remove the stage.
I understand what he's asking. The 180,000 is to remove the stage and make the space larger for the cafeteria seating.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
One thing I was happy to hear you say is, I would rather hear a Stage Four than hear give up on the air conditioning. So, that is not even in the thinking.
No.
Just wanted to confirm that.
No.
And then, I just have to ask, regarding the new lockers, are we able to repurpose anything of what we have, or are they in that bad a shape?
The lockers are in very bad shape. They've been painted over on the outside several times, but the inside is rusted, the bottoms are falling out. They are done.
Okay, thank you.
But you can take some of them home if you want, like a historian. Mr. Asa, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Could you just, do you know what the, because I believe on the Holland Hill project, some of the lockers were basically given up because of the expense. Do you remember what the expense was on those? I could be wrong.
I don't.
Maybe Sal would know? So, lockers, replacement of lockers are not part of Holland Hill?
The lockers are replaced-
Okay.
With the renovation inside the classrooms. Holland Hill's a little bit different.
That's right.
The lockers are inside the classrooms in the existing cla, in the existing spaces. They'll be out in the hallway in the addition, but we did not give up any lockers. We need the lockers.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members on the Sherman School, and if not, we'll move on to the second capital project? Mill Hill?
The other thing I wanted to mention is, in speaking with Tony Jones, we recently from Malone McBroom received the 10-year projections, November 28, 2017, and for your information, they are on our website today. We'll be working with you on these as we build the ed specs for Sherman or Mill Hill, and these will be very helpful to all of us. So, I wanted to mention that to you. The Mill Hill project is set up typically the way we've done the last two elementary school projects. We're requesting the, a project team initial funding only. This will get the town to set up a building committee, and it gives them enough money to get started by hiring the project team, which is the architect engineers, surveyors, environmentalists, the whole team, the consultant that'll be working with the town, clerk of the works, and looking at the entire site. And you'll notice that I increased it a little bit than previous elementary schools, because I feel that the existing portable classrooms on that site are probably going to be an issue. There's two very old ones that I'm hoping will go away, and the triple unit may have to be moved for the project team to look at this site and figure out where to do an addition and renovation, similar to what we're doing at Holland Hill. When we did Holland Hill and had to add two portables, we didn't put them out with the other three, because we knew they were going to be in the way. We moved them out front, and now the building committee is moving the other ones out front to try and get them out of the way. So, we tried to anticipate that we may have the same typical issue at Mill Hill. So, I put a little bit extra money in there to deal with portable classrooms. So, that's the 1.5 million. Mill Hill is next in the waterfall schedule and the facility plan for renovation and upgrade. The building is tired and needs work, code updates, and due to the enrollment, capacity deficiencies, the whole bit.
Questions from the board on the Mill Hill project? Mrs. Maxon Canelli, followed by Mr. Asa.
This hadn't been a question until you mentioned that. I'm fairly familiar with the Mill Hill site. Where on earth would you be able to put portables? I could see them moving this way, this way, but still being on that blacktop. Where on-
There's a lot of places.
Or sideways on the hill, but-
Yeah, I've looked at the building and with some engineers, and a new addition renovation could even be a T off the left side, and come some to the front, some to the back. You could do a swing renovation addition that would wrap around like most of the schools have been getting, but they have been-
I apologize. I meant just the portables. If you move the portables, where could they go?
So, that's the point. If we could do an addition or renovation that hits part of the front, if you're standing in front of the school, the front left is, there's a very large yard, a lot of trees, an addition or renovation could go there, or the portables could move there. The portables used to go way out onto the basketball courts that used to be way out by the entrance in the back. There's space there, or we'll have to go down onto the lawn if we have to, but we'd like to try and keep them as close to the building as possible. I'm hopeful, and I've talked to the superintendent about this, that of the five portables, possibly two may go away and not be needed. We've been talking to Kevin Chase about that, too, and that would help. That would get rid of the two old ones that are falling apart, and then the triple unit will either have to stay and be worked around, or could be moved.
And my second question-
Can I answer up one?
Of course.
When you say stay, you mean stay for the purpose of construction, not stay for the rest of all time?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my second question, because I know that we will get this down the line from other town bodies, and just to clarify that committing this 1.5, we know the renovation is needed. This is not binding us to any particular size addition or anything like that. I'm, I'm more asking a question I know the answer to, but I know we're going to face that later down the line. So, I just want to reiterate it now. This is to start the process. This is not locking us into something.
You are correct, and superintendent and I have talked about this. We are budgeting only what we know from Riverfield and Holland Hill. So, we're budgeting about 18, 18.5 million figuring. However, this board has to decide if we're going to keep doing a 504 design renovation and addition. If we do do that and decide that, this project could be as high as 25 million for this school and this location.
You know, that last sentence you could have saved.
I'd rather get that out there so everyone knows, because once we get to the Board of Finance, and it is a difficult site, we're finding that a lot of the water, electrical feeds, gas feeds, everything that's underground for 60, 70 years is needing to be replaced and upgraded, things that we didn't figure when we estimated these elementary schools.
Can I also add, just because we've talked about it quite a bit, is that if you go back to the report that Malona McBroom did for us, where the one thing I wanted them to do, so we didn't get into the ed spec situation again, was just to overlay that so that we would know how close that building is. Mill Hill's a really small building. So, if you were, you know, doing an expansion or renovation just to get it to, to meet the ed spec for the additional spaces, you're already looking kind of like a Holland Hill project. Then, you're, you're adding classrooms to get to the 504. So, I mean, it's a very small building right now, and that's why I think it's, we want to put out there very early. It'll be a big decision for the board, in that if you build to 504, we need to know it's a pretty big expansion, because it's so small right now.
It's a tough site.
Yeah.
In the back of the building, by the triple portable unit, going down onto the lawn is all ledge. We had issues when we were putting in the other playground, so we'll have to watch that.
Mrs. Gerber?
Oh, I'm sorry, did Mr. Asa?
Mr., can I, can I follow up on that before I get to you? I have not seen the projections. What is the maximum enrollment that you think those current projections show for Mill Hill? And I have a follow-up based on what the state regulations are, if you will.
So, Mill Hill 10-year projection, the highest is 384.
Okay. So, I believe the state has a regulation that if you build more space than is required by your 10-year projection, that impacts the reimbursement. So, could you explain to the board what I just said, so that they know that that's a factor that we need to consider when we're looking at this plan later on?
It is correct. This, the state looks at our projections that we submit with the project, and then they'll look at them again when they go through the audit phase, which could be five, six years later. And they do let us know if we're designing or building too large of a school based on the standard in Connecticut, State of Connecticut, and based on the enrollment projection. So, for an instance, an example, of Burr and McKinley, were built larger square footage than an average elementary school is built. At the time, we did Burr and McKinley, I think 68, 69,000 was the norm. Those two schools were 71,000. So, they look at that, and they take that few square footages off, and you don't get reimbursed for them. So, that's an example.
And the reason I raise that is that while the state has this 10-year window that they look at, as a Board of Education, when we do a building, sometimes we see, I think that building's going to last 20, 30, 40 years, and so, while we're doing it, should we build to 504, not because we need it today, but 20 years, we may need it, and in 20 years, the cost of addition, those two extra classrooms, will be astronomical. And so, those are some of the, I'll say philosophical, as well as financial discussions and debates we'll have at the appropriate time.
Yes, I like to think that when we do a big renovation and addition like this, that we get 50, 60 years out of it.
Yeah. And you'll be around to celebrate, then? Mr. Asa?
Can, just really quick, can you give us the number, really quick, the 10-year high for Sherman as well? Because I, because when we look at that, we're, we're way over capacity, right? So, curious what-
Yes, the highest number is 486.
Okay, so higher than what it is now. So, to the chair, would we also, would the state consider being over capacity in a school close to geography and being able to utilize that new space to absorb those, so one's not over capacity with regards to reimbursement, or no? If that makes any sense?
He addressed it to me, but if you want to take a crack at this, but I wonder if Mr. Asa is trying to ask a question without saying the word redistricting?
Yes.
Okay.
If redistricting were to occur, could that be part of what's presented to the state to maximize reimbursement?
Certainly, if we redistricted to put more students over to Mill Hill, which would then boost up their enrollment projections, the answer is yes.
Okay. And would, would that have to be done prior to the project starting?
Mr. Cullen, what's the timing in terms of the state kind of saying, we'll reimburse?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. I wouldn't know what the timing is. Right now, the state is grossly behind in getting us information. Even approval of Holland Hill took a very long time.
So, I'll try and answer it this way. If you think somebody on the board can remind me when we voted to move Holland Hill forward versus we're now submitting the plans to the state. So, there's a big gap in time before we'll even be asking the state if this is too big of a building.
Okay.
Because it'll be a year or more before the building committee gets put in place. They do their plans. They get it down to where it's going to be presented to the state. So, we have time, but not a lot of time.
Okay. And another question, speaking of Holland Hill, I believe that initial seed money was 2.1, correct?
No, 1.24.
1.2, I'm sorry.
1.24.
So, I apologize, a little moment there. So, the increase in this is mostly due to what?
I, I put money in there to deal with the portable classrooms in case the building committee needs it.
Because I believe, if I, if I'm not mistaken, that there was roughly 250,000 in the Holland Hill for new portables.
Right.
Which is roughly equal to this number here. So, I'm trying to just figure out where the, yes?
The difference is between Holland Hill and Mill Hill, there's an additional $100,000 for the architect. 495 was what Holland Hill was budgeted for, and it's 595.5 for Mill Hill. Then, the environmental was 82,000 for Holland Hill. It's 112 for Mill Hill. Surveyor's the same. Geotech engineer is 5,000 more. Geotech engineer is 5,000 more. Green is the same. Construction manager, owner representative is 70,000 more. And then the next two are the same, and the portables are the same as they were for Holland Hill. And then the contingency is more, it's 50K more than Holland Hill.
So, thank you for that, because that's helpful. So, taking that into play, so regarding architects, engineer, and construction owners' representative being roughly 170,000, as mentioned, is that based on experience recently?
Yes, it's based on the two schools we just did, and what we know about Mill Hill right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I would remind the board that the Holland Hill project had two portable projects. One was the leasing of two new portables, and the other was the relocation of existing portables. And so I think you are just talking about.
I just put a placeholder in, in case the building committee looks at it and says, you know, three of the five ideas that a project team's going to come up with, the portables are in the way.
Yeah, but just to a point of what you said, Mr. Chairman, with Holland Hill, in this initial money was new portables, but the relocation is part of the overall budget supported, so.
Correct.
So there is a little difference there.
Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
First through the chair to Dr. Jones. Are we going to get a presentation on the enrollment projections, or are we going to get the actual, you know, I know Mr. Cullen said we can go online, but are we going to actually get our own?
Yes, we will. We knew that Mr. Cullen needed them for this work. We just put them online today. I chose not to have Malona McBroom add it to the agenda, or asked to have it.
But we've had them for two weeks.
We've had, well, we've had them, yes, but we have to actually work with them first to go through them all, make sure these numbers match what they sent us before, like for the first year projection. So, once we get them, they're not, they're not ready to go out until we've checked them and approved them.
Okay, it just would have been nice if they're already online, it would be nice if the board could have gotten them.
Well, we did, that's why we were telling you tonight, and we just put them on for tonight. I will send them out to the board, but the reason they're not here is because we only have one more visit with them, and I knew that the board was going to have a lot of facilities discussion, because this board really hasn't had any, and so I wanted to save the visit, because they charge us every time they're here. And with that first purchase order, I thought I would save their visit and let you know that they're here tonight, we're putting them online, we'll send them to the board.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had for Mr. Cullen. So looking back at Mill Hill over the different facilities plans, so 2016, August 2016, it was at 15 million. Then just this past August, I mean, just four months ago, it was listed as 18.72 million. Now you're saying it's going to be 25 million if we actually went with the 504?
Yes.
Like what happened from August till now?
Yep. The 15 million was an initial number we looked at, based on that enrollment at that time. When we saw the numbers from Riverfield and Holland Hill coming in, we talked about raising it up to the 18.7, to at least bring them to that status. And then we looked at when this board, a while back, years back, discussed a different enrollment design for each building. We looked at a 462 model, we looked at a 504 model.
Yeah.
We brought Dr. Jones up to speed with that discussion, and we discussed how important it was for this board to decide are we going to keep going with the 504 model or not, based on the enrollment projections that are coming out for that school. So, that's where we talked about that the number is going to be well over 18.7 million if we do a 504 model at Mill Hill.
But the 504 model is what's listed in this August 2017 book. It's not the 460.
Yes.
Two.
Yes, but based on the numbers we're seeing from the building committees for Riverfield and Holland Hill, the numbers are going up. We're seeing more, more work in the water meter rooms, the boiler rooms, the new lines underground I talked about, gas, water, sewer, everything that's adding to the cost that we weren't figuring in back then. So we wanted to revise our numbers.
Okay, it just seemed odd that, I mean, I understand going from August 2016 to August 2017, and going from 15 to 18.72, but from August to now, going from 18.72 to 25 million, it just seems like a pretty large jump for the same.
Yes.
Capacity school.
Yeah, we're under budgeting the projects that are getting built.
Okay.
And it's based on the things that we can't see. The things that are underground, that we don't have the funds to spend on environmental consultants and engineers to investigate for us, are the things that are really hitting us. The site work, we originally were looking at 300,000 to 500,000 for our sites, and sites are coming in at 3 million to renovate.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one quick question. I'm, this is a follow-up to Mr. Asa's question, and I apologize, I don't claim to be an accountant. I don't understand, if we're saying we're putting in a buffer for the portables, then why is that first line for architect, engineers, and consultants, the one that's 100,000 higher?
Yeah, I raised some other numbers based on that site, Mill Hill. Knowing that Mill Hill's going to be a little bit more difficult than Riverfield and Holland Hill was. I believe with the surveying, the site, the ledge that's in the ground, and just the positioning of that site, I think it's going to be more difficult. So I put more money in for the project team, and for some other things.
So even though we're already aware of the difficulties, it's that there might be more still, I mean, ledge is there, we know it's there, what more is there to discover?
Well, we don't, we haven't done any drilling to actually locate it. I don't know where the project team is going to decide to put the addition and renovation. You know, as they look at that building, there's probably 100 different ideas of what to do. You could even, even Tony Jones said you could put a second floor on, depending on what that team looks at and does. But we do know that it's a difficult site, it's small, it's hilly, it has ledge, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? So these projects will be on our January meeting for action, to move them forward. Mr. Asa?
Can I just ask a question regarding, going back to the waterfall chart and these new numbers, like going from 18 to 25, how will that affect the future projects with regards to the chart?
Our longstanding commitment to the town.
Yes.
Is that as we find projects either costing more or less than what is budgeted on the waterfall chart, then our finance department, our central office staff, will work with Mr. Mayor to balance out the project. Sometimes it's having to move a project from one year to another, and sometimes it may be going from three phases to four. But we say that we will make whatever adjustments in other projects that are needed in order to stay within, under the 10% goal.
And when is that done? On an annual basis, or?
Yeah, usually we do that on an annual basis. The summit workshop, financial summit workshops usually in September. So we've got a couple of things we're taking off. I have good news about some roof warranty extensions we don't have to do, which is saving us almost $2 million. We'll look at, if this board decides on an ed spec 4 Mill Hill that is a 504 design, then we will need to increase that number. But it gets worked on throughout the year as things happen.
Now, these are adjustments that staff make in conjunction with the town officials, and they get communicated to us. Generally, as a Board of Education, we have taken our long-range capital projects plan. In about every five years, the board has reviewed and revised it by vote. But we do not try to bring it forward, debate it, and revise the capital plan every time a project changes or shifts subtly. Even if it's a big shift, we generally try and do it as a board when there are enough changes to warrant a full discussion.
Okay. And when was the last time?
15, I think, 2015. The first one was 2010, the second one was 2015.
2011.
2011, and the, so there's no guarantee that it's going to be 2019, it's when the need is felt. Anything else on Mill Hill? So this will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Let's move on to the capital non-recurring. Enclosure number four.
I thought you were leaving, Mr. Cullen.
No, I have to get the next one. And these are the projects that we try to move through the RTM at a quicker pace than the operating budget, so that as a district, we can get out to bid before the construction companies are all overflow with work, and we get better bids that way. So that's why we put it on tonight's agenda, pass it in January, then start marching it through the various town bodies. Mr. Cullen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Capital non-recurring projects, we always try and stay around $2 million or less when we submit these. It was just a number that the town worked with us on, that was reasonable, fit into the waterfall, and they're short-term bonding. So this is a pretty simple request. There are four projects in here that are part of the booklet we sent you. The first one is the system-wide security infrastructure upgrades. We didn't list this as a phase, because it's not a new phase to add to the security infrastructure. It's actually to complete out the intrusion panels from the other phases. As we worked with the police department and the schools, picking the right product, and getting the vendor on board and bidding everything, we realized that we needed a little bit more money to complete this at all the schools. So this will wrap up all of the security infrastructure phases that we have started, which there are three currently.
Any questions on this project? Okay, thank you, next one?
Okay, the next one is the secondary schools. The year before this, we did all the elementary schools. What we wanted to do was upgrade the information technology in all of the schools. So the projector that's in the schools had a CAT V wire, we wanted to increase them to the new system of CAT VI. And the outlets that were at all of the projector locations was a duplex, which is two outlets, and we really needed a quad, which is four. The project was bid out, an electrical company was awarded it, they got all the elementary schools done this summer. It was a project we were worried about, and it went, couldn't have gone smoother. So we're very happy, and information technology was moving forward with it. Very clean, neat project. So we wanted to introduce the secondary schools and wrap up the project.
Any questions on this project? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one question. I was hoping you could speak to the line regarding maximizing the efficiency of the sports staff for this.
And what, where, what page is that on?
I apologize, that's on page?
Six.
Six? Under purpose and justification? Because based on the paragraph above, in terms of what the background, or what this will enable staff to be able to do remotely.
Oh yeah. Nancy can help us with that. Yeah, I thought you said sports, too. I was looking for it.
I thought you said sports.
Where?
When you, instead of support, I thought you said sports.
We all thought you said sports. So we're scratching our heads.
That's why Mr. Cullen's face was so quizzical.
What we're referring to is that the ethernet cables that Mr. Cullen's referring to allow us to remotely control the projectors. So rather than having somebody running around trying to figure out whether a bulb's going down, or a teacher reporting that a bulb is starting to flicker or go out, we'll have information ahead of time that the bulb is at end of life, and we'll be able to deal with that. We have basically one person who goes around and does all that work, so it would allow us to use him more proactively rather than reactively. And that's what we've seen with the elementary schools.
Just saying, as a teacher, that is just so cool. But, so, but I guess, obviously there has to come with, you know, a dollar amount on that, just so to make that clear. Is that, so this is, I hadn't realized, there's one person for all 17 schools who would be doing this work?
And they're already on board, so it's not an add-on, it's just making that person more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this project? Seeing none, on to the next one?
All right, the next project was a request from last year that was rejected by the Board of Selectmen. What we try to do is internally, we have a paving account, it's very small. We try and do two or three, possibly four, schools where we can replace some bad areas where the batuminus is falling apart. And then the larger ones, we put into non-recurring requests. So Fairfield Ludlow High School student parking lot is in very bad shape. It's to the point where we're going to need to keep striping over the numbers in the lines every year, because it's crumbling. So I really want to encourage the town bodies to approve this, so we can move forward with repaving this whole lot. I increased it by $25,000, because the numbers I originally had, we're working with DPW, Tilcon Tomaso, who's a batuminus paving company. He looked at the site, we've brought them all back to make sure they saw the solar carports in the way. Would there be any increase? They all said no. But I wanted to make sure with the escalation of costs that we had enough in there. And then we reclaim what's there, so it's not just a coverover. We don't just hire a company to come in and pave over what's there. The first company that comes in reclaims it, they chew up all the existing old batuminus, take it back to the plant, and then we get a whole new sub-base and new batuminus paved and compressed. And then Safety Markings comes in and does all the markings. So it's a complete new project, we should get 20 years out of it, if it's done right. So I'd like to reintroduce this and hope that the town bodies don't reject it.
Mr. Asa?
Just a quick random question regarding the carports and everything. Has it introduced any kind of new drainage issues or water flow issues that may come into play that weren't necessarily there before?
Yes, we've had a couple of questions with the recent snowstorm we had. The panels did pick up all of the snow, so it wasn't as bad underneath. We're not using as much salt underneath for the parking lot, but where it's draining, it is washing down onto some sidewalks. And the principals are asking some questions about us following up with that and making sure that it's going to be, continue to be safe, we're not going to need gutters, and what kinds of things we're doing. But we've only had one snowstorm, so we're pretty new at this.
Yeah, I guess my question was just related to if any additional drainage or anything needs to be looked at, or if we're good there?
Not for the site.
Okay.
But the issue that the panels are so large, they take up such a huge area, and they all wash down to one spot. We mainly want to make sure that in the snowstorm times, it's not washing down onto the sidewalks and freezing at night, and so on. So we are watching that.
Which, which may require drainage work, but at the moment?
No.
We're just watching.
I would just hate to have to rip up a brand-new paved lot to do any additions or renovations.
No, it's not draining onto the paved lot. A lot of what we did, when we worked with the solar carport company, we specifically asked them to try and get the large stanchions, concrete stanchions and sonotubes into the islands, into the sides, so they're not in the middle of all the parking lots. And they did do a very good job with that, and listening to us. So, a lot of it's draining onto the grass edges, fences. Ludlow High School, it is draining down onto one sidewalk near the tennis courts that we're watching.
Can I just ask one sort of related question? The road going down there towards Mill Plain, that, with the new senior assisted facility going in there, is that, I believe that's our road, right? But is that company that's building that thing, are they going to be repaving that, or?
They are.
Okay, at their expense?
I don't think it's our road. I think along Sturgis Field, it's town property, as soon as it comes up closer to the tennis courts, it's our property. So I think it's split, but Carolyn owns repaving that road.
So they're paying for it? Excellent.
The housing project is actually on land that Carrollton owns, so I think the road that goes all the way up to the edge of that site plan probably is either town or whatever.
I heard rumors that the rooms facing the artificial turf field are in high demand. They can watch all the games.
Mrs. Gerber?
I think I remember asking this last year, because it was the same issue when this was before us and we approved it. So, because next summer is the last summer of the Ludlow windows, so there won't be any conflicts, or they'll be able to schedule to make sure that any, you know, construction vehicles coming in to do the windows won't be running into problems not being able to get into the parking lot whenever it's being repaved that summer.
Correct, not at all.
Okay.
We'll be able to work with them.
Okay. And then, so I was just comparing the two from last year, and obviously, I guess the assumption would be that if for some inexplicable reason, one of the town bodies decided to turn this down again, it would simply continue to become a more expensive project.
Yes, and I have to fund the restriping of it. It's about $7,800 last time I had to do it. That should last four or five years, and I'm doing it every two years now, because it's just crumbling.
No, it's in terrible shape.
Yeah.
Yeah. So hopefully, it'll get through this time.
It may be helpful if the nine members of us, and maybe a PTA or two, or maybe a headmaster or two, were to have a higher level of advocacy for this project. Redoing a parking lot is not the most exciting thing to push forward, but clearly, Mrs. Gerber is correct, this project does need to be done, so the more advocacy we can do with town bodies, I think the students will appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions on the student parking lot replacement? If not, the fourth one.
Okay, the last and final project is an information technology switch replacement project. The Director of Information Technology is here. She submitted a plan to the town bodies and Board of Finance, a long-term plan of technology projects. And one of the larger ones that we looked at in serious need was the switch replacement project. And she's here to help answer any questions related to that project. If you read the information, it's a very large project. We're looking at doing it in two phases because of the cost. And that's about it.
I have one question, and that is, I couldn't quite follow the math of how the 2,013 is the total of the 972 and the 1,040, but the 461 and the 1,552 million that is under the grant filing, do those numbers reduce the overall cost eventually, or are those numbers in addition to the number? It wasn't all that clear to me.
The total project cost is the $2 million number. We hope that we'll get the typical E-rate grant amount, which is, for our district, around 40%. Some years it's 39, some years it's 41. It's based on free and reduced lunch counts and a calculation that they provide. So we feel that the total project over the two phases would be the 1.552 that you see there underneath.
On page 20.
On page 20.
You look on page 20.
But what we would be asking, the reason I'm asking is?
Have to ask for the full amount.
We have to ask for the full 2 million.
Right.
And then I'm sure the town bodies will say, what guarantees do we have that the 461 will be there?
Yeah.
So what's the answer to that question?
We can apply. There's no guarantees when you talk E-rate. I can tell you that the two high school wireless upgrades that we recently did, we were able to get the 40% grant money. So we roughly got between $50,000 and $60,000 on each of those projects. So depending on the timing of the approvals, we should be okay. If there's a postponement, the, what they call the priority two funding that allows us to apply for these particular types of E-rate grants expires in the fiscal year two, not the fiscal year, but the application year of 2019. The FCC is currently contemplating whether to continue that or not. We are all advocating very strongly for them to continue it. But there's, once again, it's the federal government. We don't know which way they're going to go.
So these are federal funds passed through the state or directly from federal?
No, directly from federal.
Thank you.
This is, if you look at your, your regular old-fashioned phone line bills, even your cellphone bills, you'll see on the, in the fine print, there's a universal service fund charge. That's what funds this grant.
Other questions that board members have? Seeing none? Nope, you do.
What, sorry. What happens to that money if we get that grant money back? Does that just go back to?
These are, the nonrecurring are projects that we bond.
Okay, so it goes back to general fund.
Well, it doesn't ever actually leave because we don't bond it until the project's complete, and whatever the net cost is.
Correct.
This is what the town does.
Yeah, the town bonds what you need.
So we would know when the project's complete if we're getting that grant or not, so?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, so these will be on the next agenda, regular meeting for approval. If you have additional questions in the meantime on either the capital project requests or the capital nonrecurring, please forward them to the superintendent so she can get them out to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, 10.
Can I just mention if any senior staff want to head home? I don't think there's any more items on here for senior staff.
But RTM members have to stay. The last business item is discussion and possible action on bylaw change. We had one submitted. Why don't we deal with that? And then I think Mr. Asa wants to bring us up to date on his idea, and then I have one question as well. So this is enclosure number five. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes, I'm sorry, that the Board of Education approve the bylaw change for Article 2, Section 3C as enclosed. Mrs. Gerber moves by the second. Mrs. Maxon Canelli. Mrs. Gerber is the sponsor, so please forward your idea.
Well, I did at our last meeting hand something out to board members to explain my rationale and my thoughts behind simply switching the bylaw regarding minutes back to what it was prior to November 2013. So my hope is that the board will support this motion.
Any questions or comments? I'll only make one is, I have always been an advocate to stay more closely aligned with Robert's rules, which has kind of two basic statements, that no attempt should be made to indicate what a guest, member of the public, says at a meeting in terms of trying to create a sentence that states the essence of it. Just state the fact that the person was here. And the second thing that it comments frequently is, you should record the action, not what was said. I have been the only board member who would like to stay very strictly to that definition. Most board members have wanted to be a little bit more expansive on terms of the discussion back and forth, and I think Mrs. Gerber has done a very good job of trying to balance the various other board members who were here, who might have wanted more of a transcript. And so I fully support this and hope that it does lead actually to more concise minutes in the future. Just, that's my personal viewpoint. At the moment, every time you vote the minutes, you are approving the format and the, how we construct them. And so, so if there are no other questions, then I'll say that we're ready for action, that the Board of Education approve the bylaw change for Article 2, Section 3C as enclosed, enclosure number five. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
And just also, it's not just me doing the minutes, it's also Mrs. Brown, so.
Absolutely. Item number seven, 10, 10. Item number seven, we have three sets of minutes.
Four.
Four. Let me turn the page. Yes, four. First, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 28, 2017. Mrs. Gerber moves. Mrs. Jacobson seconds. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. The second set of minutes is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the organizational meeting of November 28, 2017. Mrs. Gerber moves. Mr. Asa seconds. Any questions on those sets of minutes? Hearing none, please raise your hand. All in favor, say, raise your hand. Okay, 9-0, thank you. Third set of minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 28, 2017. Mrs. Gerber moves. Ms. Pitko seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, thank you. And the last set of minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 6, 2017. Mrs. Gerber moves. Mrs. Vitale seconds. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand, and it's 9-0. And we're now on to the... How life is different.
Harry Christmas.
So, on to the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of, couple of items. First of all, I know the students mentioned the high school concerts that are coming up, and I'm looking forward to attending both of those next week. Also, McKinley had their winter concert, which was fabulous. I was glad I was able to attend. Since we were talking about academic expectations and really kind of that project-based learning and assessment, I just wanted to mention a couple of the things that I've been able to attend just in the last, really, five days. One was the Shark Tank, which was an event or part of the programming that they have at Riverfield, and it's real-life learning for students, which is really what we want. And everything they were talking about tonight academically, that's what we really want to see systemically. And the students were pitching products that, you know, they really had created, just like they do on TV. The fun part for me and the other adults that were the Sharks, were they just give us blank checks. So, you know, we could offer them $100,000 or $1 million for 20% of their business, but it was just really great when you talk about presentation skills and starting down in elementary. I can really see, and I think the staff are seeing as they're out and visiting schools, that it's so easy to apply that academic expectation rubric all the way down to elementary. Also, I just want to mention, I know Ted and Paul have left, but they're instrumental in the Ward TV show that they put out, and Ted's actually one of the stars on there. And it's just, it's a delight to watch. And that in itself, just to produce that, which Paul, you know, is a lot behind that production side, they make it really interesting when you can watch a high school news show, learn a lot about the school, but it's also just fun. So, I mean, that's another example of just great activity that our students are doing. Also, the Bella Boutique, I was able to attend that last week and bought Christmas things for myself, but it was really fun. But that is such an authentic experience, and we really do a great job of having opportunities like that around the district. I mean, they were scanning the codes. The codes had all been preloaded on everything that was purchased. You know, they had bought items wholesale as well as made items that were for sale at the store. Really an authentic experience. And then also Dwight is producing a news show with their fifth graders. So if you haven't had a chance to watch that, those are just some of the highlights, literally from the last week. And then last but not least, I was thrilled, before I mention the last thing, that the snow day came on a Saturday for our first snow day. I was thrilled. I do have on here, just to mention, the district profile and performance report, and I hope that the way I'm presenting it is, is okay with the board. I didn't feel like the board needed another kind of half-hour, 45-minute presentation on it, because all of the information that's in it was presented last year in the pieces in the presentations, and it is the 15-16 performance report, so it's not even last year. We will be back before the board sometime, January, February, March, when the new report comes out from last year, from 16-17. They've said the end of January, and we think that's optimistic. We're expecting probably to get the report around maybe February, but we will bring that full report. We have put this online, because I think at some point last year, between the changeover from Dr. Tracy, myself, somewhere, it just didn't, we didn't put it online, so it is out there now.
This is a report that was published by the state annually, religiously, and literally showed up on our agenda in November because state law requires it. Two, three years ago, the state decided to redo this report, and for a couple of years, did not issue it, and then finally issued the 15-16 one. And hopefully, they'll get back onto a regular schedule so that we can, on a regular basis, say this is part of our agenda, because state law does require the report to at least be on an agenda. So this gets, this 15-16 report on our agenda, and hopefully, as soon as the next one comes out, it'll get on our agenda quicker, and we'll get into a routine. Any questions the board members have on the 15-16 district profile report, or anything else that the superintendent commented on? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Just one quick question. Is it, do you find, do you or your staff actually use any portion of a 15-16 report?
The pieces and the components that are in it, by the time the report comes out, we've had the report in other mechanisms, where they're already sending us like our S-BAC scores. So we're using all of the information, but by the time the report comes out, it's too late really to be useful. Or if you even take 16-17, we couldn't have done that presentation at the last board meeting. We would have been waiting until the end of the year. But we have it already in pieces. I think it's more of a public document to be user-friendly for the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? If not, committee liaison reports? Any committee liaison reports? Ms. Pitko?
So I'm going to report on SEPTA. I just want to first say, happy Hanukkah to anybody starting to celebrate tonight.
Yes.
This Friday, December 15, FBS grants are open until, they're due on Friday. The Fairfield Special Education PTA Grant Program is now accepting applications for the 2017-18 academic year. The grant program has allowed them to provide funding to educators who serve children who learn in diverse ways. Applicants must be a current SEPTA member, and they can send them to the grant committee, and they'll be notified by January 31st. This past weekend, the Only You Foundation did a social event for some of our SEPTA kids. It was a gingerbread-making event. It was, it was great. I didn't get to go. I had a birthday party, but it was awesome. I swear this was not a plug with these cookies, but I will also be baking cookies. SEPTA's having the cookie walk here in the lobby of the Board of Ed offices on December 20th. It's from 8:00 AM to 12:00. They're still looking for bakers, but please come and purchase some cookies. It's a great fundraiser. And SEPTA's foregoing their meeting for December to have their holiday party on December 20th, if anyone's a SEPTA member. The next SEPTA teen social group is January 26 from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. The place isn't listed yet, so I'm sure I'll mention that in the January meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Any other committee liaison reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Just to let everyone know that the Osborne Hill Building Committee is going before the Board of Selectmen next Wednesday, the 20th, is my understanding, and they will probably, hopefully, be disbanded, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Leeper?
At the RTM meeting last night, the administrator's contact, contract was presented, and probably Mrs. Maxon Canelli can better speak to it, but it was presented to several questions, and I think many of those are anticipated to be answered at next week's meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else have a liaison report? Each of you, I think, either got an email or a phone call from me, and each of you have recently, I think, today, got an email that you were copied on from Mrs. Brown relative to alerting your committees or the groups that you're liaison to that you have been appointed. You might want to reach out to them, especially for those of you who are on new groups, reach out to them yourself, just to make sure you get on their schedule of regular meetings and get on their group emails. Anything else? If not, open board comment? Is there any open board comment? Seeing none?
I just want to remind everyone, I'm not going to be here Thursday for the town hall style meeting, because I have a work commitment.
Yes. So the meeting dates is official now. It's at your table. These will be submitted to the town and will become the official dates for the next meeting. And the official schedule of who's on what committee is also in front of you. Sometimes because of the change of the Holland Hill Building Committee meetings, Mr. Asa, I wasn't exactly sure what, quote, "regular schedule" they were on, and I wonder if you might give Meg an email and say, this, you know, the second Tuesday or the whatever, or if it's not that and it's just on the call of the chair, so that we don't have an empty box there.
They did have proposed meeting dates for the years, so I don't know if that actually got, I think it got voted and approved, so I'll get that to...
Yeah, and so if there's a regular, regularity to it.
Okay, I'll look into that and make sure she has that information.
Thank you. Well, we outlasted the last member of the public. So no member of the public is here, so we'll skip over that.
Mr. Dwyer, could you just give one more plug? I didn't, I know if you were going to say it then, but for the town hall on Thursday, for anyone who watches the tape or is still watching?
Yes, we do have a town hall scheduled. You'll notice on the 2018 calendar that there are two dates scheduled for town halls. So this will be beginning at 7:30, not at 7:00. We will follow the same format that we've adopted over the last couple of times, in which, when a member of the public comes up and asks a question, we'll kind of rotate around so that every board member will have either... around so that every board member will have either an opportunity or responsibility to be first. But we will not go in complete circle. We'll just say the first person that talks, and then see if any other board members want to make a comment, and if not, we move on to the next one. And if we're sitting like this, maybe Ms. Leeper will get the first question, then the second will be Mrs. Vitale. You're allowed to skip. You know, if you say, no, I don't have a response to that or I don't have a comment on that, and we just see who else does. It's pretty informal, and it allows dialogue back and forth between us and the members of the public. We specifically use the agenda item that is historic unless we have a specific topic we want to also address, which allows program finances and facilities so that virtually any question can be asked as long as it is not personnel-related. So, it's a pretty broad, open discussion. So, hopefully, members of the public will join us for the town hall meeting, even though there probably are holiday parties that are competing with us.
Concerts.
And concerts and other stuff. Okay, with no further comment, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Gerber. Ms. Pitco, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.